Hi, my name is Lucy Bisson and I'm the Chair of the Lewiston Planning Board, and I welcome all of you here this evening and call this meeting to order. Christine, could we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Roger Dupree.
Here.
Joshua Najin.
Here.
Michael Markot.
Present.
Shannon Cox.
Here.
Lucy Bisson.
Here.
Myself, Christine Kittredge. Amy Smith.
Here.
And Alexander Pine.
Here.
And for staff, we have Shelley Norton, the Deputy Director, City Planner; Craig Tebow, the City Planner; David Hediger, Director of Planning and Code Enforcement; and Linda Tripp, the Administrative Assistant. I'd like to read a little something before we start. These are the planning board's procedures. The planning board is comprised of seven appointed members. A quorum necessary to conduct an official meeting of the planning board shall consist of at least four members. Agendas for this meeting are available in the wall container at the entrance to this room, and should anyone in attendance not have a copy. The agenda for this evening consists of the following items. Is there anyone in attendance present to the matter of -- okay, that doesn't make any sense. Regarding the agenda items before the planning board, I will first identify the item, and then staff will make a brief presentation followed by planning board questions. I will then request a presentation by the applicant petitioner to explain their proposal, followed by board questions. I will then open the meeting for public comment with proponents speaking first, followed by anyone in opposition or having questions regarding the proposal. I please ask that anyone who speaks for or against or has questions concerning the subject matter to use the microphone provided by the staff at this meeting, because the meeting is being recorded, and to identify themselves by name and address for our record. The applicant petitioner shall be given the opportunity to make any responses to public comments. The public portion will then be closed, and the planning board will deliberate and vote on the matter before us. Once the planning comment, the public comment portion of the meeting is closed, unless there is a specific question from a board member to the public, the public portion will remain closed. The planning board must decide on all matters in accordance with the Code of Ordinance of the City of Lewiston, along with any provisions of law within our jurisdictions. Some decisions that this board makes may also be contrary to public opinion, and it is possible that some board members may have philosophical differences with some proposals. However, this board must base its decisions on the law and ordinances rather than individual sentiments. The concurring vote of at least four members is required to constitute an action on any matter requiring a public hearing. All matters require a simple majority vote. Now, if you come up to speak, you would speak at the podium over in the back or on the side. State your name, your address, and you have three minutes. You can come up once. You have three minutes to speak, and then you're done. Mr. Hediger will be keeping time, and he will, if someone goes over the three minutes, then he will indicate that. Okay? Thank you. Okay, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No, we don't.
Any correspondence?
I did just want to remind the board members, we sent an email this week inviting you to the Build Maine Conference that's being held up in Waterville this year. It is on June 7th and 8th, and the city is a sponsor, so we have an unlimited number of people that we can send, so just wanted to remind everybody.
Okay, thank you. Next will be public hearings. The first one will be Bernstein Schur on behalf of the owner of Chase Custom Homes and Finance, Inc., has substituted a reexamination and reapproval request for the Sanctuary Estate subdivision, which created 31 single-family lots on a 33-by-point-two-acre parcel located at 131 Hogan Road. Mr. Tebow.
Thank you. So hopefully, we're starting off easy tonight. This was a subdivision approved back in 2018. It was approved in two phases. The first phase was in 2018, in April 9th, for 31 lots. The second phase was for an additional 14 lots, and that was approved July 8th, 2019. So the first phase has made significant progress. They've not fully completed or finished the project, so they need to reapply for approval. There have been no changes to the plan itself or to any relevant ordinances, and the planning board's authority is under Article 13. If the approved development is not completed within five years from the date of granting of approval or extension of approval, said approval shall expire, and the applicant shall reapply for a new approval. The appropriate reviewing authority must reexamine its initial approval and may impose additional terms or conditions or prescribe other necessary corrective action to respond to significant changes in circumstances which may have occurred between the date of original approval and the date of expiration of that approval. To our knowledge, there's no, there have been no changes to any relative ordinances, including zoning, stormwater, or environmental protections that would require a major review of this project. We are recommending, we're recommending reapproval of the development review and subdivision application with the original five conditions shown on the memo. That I turn it over to the board with any questions?
Okay, does the board have any questions of Mr. Tebow? Yes, Mr. Markot.
Since this is an extension, is this the final potential extension, or can there be more?
I believe there can be, you know, following the same procedure as today. If it were to expire after another five years, then, you know, we would follow the same procedure we're going through now.
I thought we put a limit.
Because it's technically not an extension, this is a reapproval.
It's a reexamination is the term that's used in the ordinance, so.
So it's starting anew under that vocabulary.
It starts the clock again, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any questions of -- yes. Oh, Shannon, I'm sorry.
You might tell me this is a better question for the applicant, and I welcome that. It's noted that Phase 1 has made significant progress. How many of the 31 lots are currently occupied?
You would be correct. That is a question for the applicant.
Okay, I'm happy to hold it.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? In that case, if the applicant would come up and introduce themselves, please state your name and -- no, you can come to the table if you like. You can pull up a chair for the other gentleman if, yeah, that way you don't have to sit on each other's laps. It's not too comfortable.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you would both introduce yourselves, and then we'll go to questions.
Thank you. My name is Phil Sossier from Bernstein Schur, and we're on behalf of Chase Custom Homes.
I'm William Noon, 146 Highland Avenue, South Portland, and I'm here on behalf of Chase Custom Homes.
Okay. Did you want to make some comments before we get to the questions, or do you just get to the questions?
Maybe just very briefly.
Okay, certainly.
Craig, I think very nicely, Mr. Tebow very nicely described what we're looking for tonight. There was no sort of changed circumstances, the expiration, I mean, the approval expired, and so the company's looking to have it reapproved. It's, I think, and Bill will give a little, potentially a little more context, I think it'll be helpful for you to understand sort of why it expired. But I think really briefly to Ms. Cox's question, it's, I think only one lot is actually under construction right now, but when it discusses it in terms of what the approval conditions are, in terms of how much, that's the required improvements, so in other words, the road, the grading, the, you know, all the other infrastructure issues, that's what the expiration is teed off of, so not necessarily how many lots were sold. And that is where most of the work has been done. And so I think what we had said, it was sent to the planning office, there's a little bit of grading that needs to be done and a bit of paving, if you want to, just.
Small amount.
Very small amount. And so the company still has a performance guarantee in place for around $70-some thousand, which in the estimate was that it would cover what's outstanding, essentially. So that's still already, already sort of, there's a guarantee out there for that. And so that should happen in relatively short order, I would assume, in this construction season probably, very, very quickly. And then I think it would be helpful for Bill just to give a little context on that.
So the context that I would be willing, that I'm able to offer, so basically, you know, they were moving along with a full head of steam, and everything was going well, and they were selling lots, and as COVID came in, it slowed some things down and put some things upside down with the subcontractors. Everybody had a little bit of an issue. Some people wouldn't even be in the same place as other people, and that was a really kind of a mess. So they got over that hurdle, but then, out of the blue, John Chase passed away, the owner of the company. He really kind of held all the cards, and his stepdaughter and stepson and wife stepped in to take over. But the thing that happens that I don't think everybody understands is that everything stops, because everything is default by death. Everything is, you know, so everything has to stop, so therefore, the subcontractors were in a strange way, they're working on getting that all worked out, and they're working on everything here. So that's where the hardship really kind of came in, is that if he hadn't have passed away, he would have stayed on top of it, and it would have been completed, and we wouldn't be here. But what happened was, it was very, very sudden, and it was, I think it was September of 2022, and it just threw everything upside down. So they're picking up the pieces, and we're here tonight to help them. And I'm open to any questions.
Okay. Anyone have, yes.
Of course. First, I'm sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Yeah. In a time when the housing market has just passed its peak and will hopefully stay hot enough to create new housing, we're at a desperate lack of inventory here in Lewiston, and so we would love to see these come to market. And perhaps the context really explains why you're not exploring a Phase 2, and you're going to focus on Phase 1 completion, but.
Right.
We would love to see these homes be sold and occupied in our city.
And they will go pretty quickly, you know, once on the open, you know.
Good, good. Anyone else have any questions? Yes, Mr. Pine.
Yeah, just, not that it's material to the decision that we're making today, but just for the record, could you talk just briefly about sort of the type of homes that are going to be offered here, what the development is? Just really brief.
So Chase Custom Homes, the word custom means you get to choose some of your own things. It doesn't necessarily mean expensive, and it doesn't necessarily mean cheap, it just means that you get to choose what your product is. So they're mostly, they're going to be 1,300 to 1,400 square-foot ranches to a probably 1,600-square-foot ranch, and then it goes into the Colonials from a 1,300-square-foot Colonial, which is the three-bedroom with a bath and a half, right, the smaller Colonial, going all the way up to 2,300, 2,500 with a room above the garage, right? Some will have finished later, some will be finished all the way through, strictly on budget. The houses all have the same kind of synergy as far as, they all have a certain look in certain products that they use, so they kind of look very similar to each other. But they're bigger and smaller, and ranches, Colonials, they don't do a lot of capes, more bang for the buck square-foot wise, I guess.
Sure, sure. Okay, anyone else have any questions? Yes, Ms. Smith.
Thank you so much for coming in tonight. I took a drive up there this morning, and it's awesome. It looks really beautiful. It's a nice layout, takes advantage of the environment, so it looks great. There's one house there right now that's.
Yes.
Partway complete, and what's that, about a 1,500?
That's a 1,728-square-foot Colonial.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you finish the room above the garage, you could put that into another 300 or 400 feet if they have that, depending on how they finish above the garage.
Okay, and again, I don't know if this is an okay question or not, but the company, as it's restructured and trying to pick up the pieces, do you think that this company is going to remain the owner and actually complete the development?
So like everything, it is, everything comes to a halt, and they're regrouping, and their wishes are to do that, yes. We're trying our best. You know, I know that we've got a lot of experience with subdivisions, and if there's any reason that they can't move forward on something, we'll make sure that it is in good hands to move forward. We've been doing this a long time, and John's built thousands of houses. Again, when he passed away, everything halted, and that's, and I don't mean everything halted company-wise, I mean, everything halted, like the financing, the, all the people that are in place, everybody kind of put a stop until they got some things figured out. I mean, we're six months or so into this, and they're getting it figured out. That's what I can say about that. I don't know the future, but I can tell you that they're getting it figured out, and they're working very hard.
Yeah, and I would just simply add, as Bill said, it is under reorganization plan, so I can't guarantee it would be the same company, but the intent, from everything I know, is to finish the subdivision. It only makes sense financially for everyone who's been involved up till now, but it could be sold to another buyer at some point.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? Yes.
I understand there's going to be an association set up with this complex, and if so, who's going to be running it?
So I'm actually unaware of that. I'm sorry about that. I'm not familiar with whether it's going to be a private road with an association, or it was going to be turned over to the city or asked to be taken by the city. I apologize, I just didn't.
There was mention in the documents that there will be an HOA.
Yeah, it's a condition of approval.
It's a condition of approval.
So there will be a.
So the HOA, how we do HOAs is it will be done within the community, and basically, we, you know, you get, as you know, in this kind of situation, you get together and you, with the residents, and you say, who wants to be president? Everybody looks at the floor, and then who wants to be the treasurer? Then finally, after a while of, you know, the community gets together, and they start choosing their line of officers, and they start putting, you know, following the covenants.
Right.
Yeah, that's probably, that's 99% of the time, that's how Chase Custom Homes does their HOAs. I mean, I've actually shown up with pizzas before to somebody's house and sat them down and said, which way can we go with this? And usually by then, by the time it's that far built out, where the declarant doesn't have responsibility for the subdivision anymore, people have gotten to know each other a little bit, and you can tell who's going to be kind of the one who wants to take control of it a little bit, or wants to do some of the finances. It's always worked out, though. I mean, they know they have to have an HOA as condition of sale on the house.
Right.
I just wasn't familiar with the declar, I mean, the subdivision rules, I haven't, I wasn't that familiar, just off the top of my head, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
All right, anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Okay, in that case, I will open it up to the public, and if anyone wishes to speak in favor or against this proposal, if you would stand and make your comments. Seeing none, I will close the meeting, and I'll bring it back to the board. Does the board have any more questions, comments, or I will entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion that the application submitted by Bernstein Schur on behalf of Chase Custom Homes and Finance at 131 Hogan Road meets all of the necessary standards contained in the Zoning and Land Use Code, including but not limited to Article 13, Section 4, Approval Criteria; Section 5, Coordination with State Subdivision Law; and Section 11, Expiration of Approval, and the approval for Phase 1 be granted with the following conditions. That a note is added to the cover sheet that prior to any certificate of occupancy being issued, that evidence of a final inspection of the stormwater system be provided to the city by the designing engineer, along with a written statement indicating that the stormwater system and all site improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plans. That a note is added to the plan that no lot or parcel of land may be conveyed, and that no permit may be issued by the city for any building or other permanent structure within the development until the completion of the street grading, paving, storm drainage, utilities, and other similar improvements as specified in the plan, and the acceptance of any public improvements by the city unless a performance guarantee has been provided to the city's satisfaction in accordance with Article 13, Section 12 of the Zoning and Land Use Code. That no building permits be issued or construction activity occurs until evidence of MDEP approval for wetland alterations has been provided to the city. That upon the sale of each parcel, the originating deed must make reference to the need for a homeowners' association and declaration of covenants and restrictions, and that the proposed street light shown on the site plan be relocated to the north side of the proposed intersection of Hogan Road and Chase Lane. My personal favorite.
Yes, do I have a second? Mr. Dupree. Okay, any further discussion? And then, in that case, I'll call the roll. Roger Dupree.
Yes.
Joshua Najin.
Yes.
Michael Markot.
Yes.
Shannon Cox.
Yes.
Christine Kittredge.
Yes.
Amy Smith.
Yes.
And Lucy Bisson, yes. Sorry about that.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
To the family, too.
Yes. Okay, our next public hearing is the Lewiston Housing Authority has submitted a conditional use permit application for the establishment of a temporary 37-bed, low-barrier homeless shelter operated by the Community Concepts at 104 Park Street, the former Lewiston Journal, Sun Journal Building. Mr. Tebow.
I'm actually going to read this.
Oh, you're going to do it?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Okay.
All right, so this project is located at 104 Park Street. It's a parcel that's just under half an acre in size, and it's almost entirely building. It's covered with the former Sun Journal Building. The proposal is for a temporary low-barrier shelter. It's called the Unhoused Response Center, and it's intended for residents experiencing homelessness. They've also noted in their application that it's a temporary two-year period that they plan to operate this shelter for a maximum of 37 beds. The project will be managed by Community Concepts. The funding is through a grant through Maine Housing to the Lewiston Housing Authority, and there will be additional services provided on-site through the Immigrant Resource Center and Lewiston Housing Authority to support the residents, or the guests, rather. There are no changes proposed to the building exterior or its footprint. There is an outdoor courtyard that they plan to make some improvements with, some vegetation to provide essentially a hedge around that, some outdoor lighting that would be focused down on the area, and it would be used for seating, outdoor seating. The main access for it will be off of Park Street. There'll be an entrance that will be the primary entrance for staff as well as guests. There are two overhead doors at the rear of the building, which would be utilized for deliveries such as food and other items, as well as deliveries for ramping up and outfitting the facility as they establish it. This location is in the San Trville zoning district. It's also within the homeless shelter overlay district, and the proposal would change the use from general office to a homeless shelter. Our ordinance requires that homeless shelters where they're allowed can be granted with a conditional use permit. Also, after a conditional use permit, they would need a license from the city council. The city does prohibit no-barrier shelters. This one is a low-barrier shelter, so you can see in the staff review that we have the definition for a homeless shelter, which, within that definition, we don't make distinctions between the levels of barrier, but we do have a definition for no barrier. So the main difference between those two is that with a homeless shelter, which is allowed, there are requirements that they would set in place a safety policy which denies entry to guests who don't adhere to their safety criteria that's listed in our homeless definition, which you can see in the ordinance. For the purposes of those present, I'll just quickly read that. So homeless shelters shall maintain a policy whereby entry and service is denied to guests who do any of the following: one, carry weapons or exhibit violent behavior; two, are in possession of alcohol, illegal substances, or drug paraphernalia; three, do not observe the shelter's safety rules; four, refuse to identify themselves; and five, have a known outstanding warrant for their arrest. There is an exemption in our definition for shelters who serve survivors of domestic violence, human trafficking, and sexual exploitation. In those cases, they wouldn't have to, those shelters aren't required to refuse someone's entry if they don't identify themselves or if they have an outstanding warrant for their arrest. So thus, from our Code of Ordinances, so really, it's, the difference is that a no-barrier shelter does not deny entrance to homeless persons, so that criteria is what really determines the homeless shelter. So what they have applied for is the conditional use permit. They've also applied for development review under our ordinance when a use is being changed, a commercial use, then development review is required. So there's really very little in the way you would normally think of development review. There's no parking being provided, no parking is required for homeless shelters in our ordinance. There's no changes to the exterior of the building and so forth. So the development review part is pretty minor. The primary elements that you'll be looking at tonight are the conditional use permit criteria and whether they meet that. But I'll talk a little bit more just about the general facilities before we move to that. So as I'd mentioned, no parking spaces are required for a homeless shelter. They plan to have temporary bathrooms, like trailer-type facilities with showers, that they would bring into the building. That will be something that when they apply for building and plumbing permit, Code Enforcement will determine if what they're proposing is allowed, and they'll have to look at that in more detail, but that's their current plan. They also have existing city sewer and water that they'll be using in those hookups. They did mention exterior lighting for the outdoor seating area. They don't specify in the application about that lighting, so I do have a condition of approval that they would meet our requirements for being full cutoff and that the light fixtures wouldn't be on a pole higher than 25 feet. There are some comments from staff that I just wanted to highlight. So we did look for comments from, as we typically do, Fire, Police, Planning, and Public Works. The comment we received back from police said that a 37-bed, low-barrier homeless shelter would have a dramatic effect on the neighborhood and undermine the quality of life issues they have been trying to address. Comments from planning, we recommended that they would address what the hours of operation will be for the facility. They don't have that in the application, and that would be a normal thing we would seek to ask for when we're looking at a conditional use permit. And then also that there would be more information on the lighting provided so we can ensure that it meets the ordinance requirements. So the recommendation from staff would be that the board would look at the conditional use permit criteria. We've included that at the end of our staff review. If you want to go through that item by item, you certainly could. And then that you would look at development review. So typically with conditional use permits, the ordinance states that it's valid for a period of six months or up to two years, and that's fixed when you grant the permit. So the suggestion from staff is that the board would tonight, when you're looking at the conditional use permit, determine what the length of time for that conditional use permit will be. We're suggesting that you give it the full two years, and this is for the establishment of the business. So this is not the length of time that your conditional use permit is good for, it's the amount of time they have to actually establish the business. So as you know, they need to go to city council for a license, they'll have some things to work through for building permit and plumbing permit, and so in order for them to get their certificate of occupancy and open their doors, it's going to take a little while. So six months might not be enough, I don't know, so you'll want to consider whether you want to give them more time than that. So you'll want to consider whether you want to give them more time than that. Okay. So that brings me to the conditions that we're recommending. The first one is that this use would have two years to commence from the date of the issue of the conditional use permit. That's what we were just discussing. So that, the, and so with a conditional use permit, you can make limitations. So this recommendation is that the approval would be for a temporary homeless shelter, not to exceed 37 beds for a two-year period, starting at the issuance of their certificate of occupancy, and that if they want to continue to operate after two years, that they would need a new conditional use permit to do so. That prior to commencing operations, a homeless shelter license is required from the city council, and that the application be amended to include the hours of operation prior to the issuance of the building permit. And those one through four, I know at our last meeting, we talked about which conditions of approval go with the conditional use permit, which go with the development review. Staff feels that those four really fit with the conditional use permit itself, and that the final condition, we're suggesting that the site plan be amended to show approximate location of exterior lighting, and a note that any lighting will be fully cut off in a maximum of 20 feet higher, that that would be related to the development review. So that's what I have at this time.
Okay. At this time, yes. Mr. Najin?
I'd like to ask the chair if I could recuse myself from this vote and step down into the audience to speak.
Absolutely. Okay. In that case, Mr. Pine, you will be a voting member for this issue. Okay. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Mr. Marcott?
I have a question for staff. The fully cutoff, what's the definition of that?
Yeah, so when you think about lights and how the light spills out of a fixture, like the round globes here on the side of the wall that everyone can see, the light's really diffuse from all directions. When you think about having a light that's shielded, there'll be a shield in it that maybe pushes the light one direction but doesn't allow it another direction. Fully cutoff means that the cutoff is really at the horizon, and so the light is only going down. It's not going up into the sky. It's not kind of going out to the neighbors, but it's really directed down.
Because the term I've been familiar with is downlighting. And I was wondering if that's...
Yeah, so we often will use the term downcast, but real full cutoff is more of the industry terminology that's used today.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for the staff? Ms. Cox?
I have a question about the definition you provided for us on a low-barrier shelter. And so it's specifically item two, are in possession of alcohol, illegal substances, or drug paraphernalia. In my work with the unhoused community, this has been interpreted in many ways, right? In possession of any of these items in their bag or on their person versus in their person, right? So the ability to refuse someone because they have consumed too much alcohol or a drug versus not allowing the substance onto the property. How, what guidance can you offer us about how we are reviewing this definition?
It's a good question. Staff had a little bit of a conversation about this, and we are by no means attorneys, but our humble opinion was that being inebriated, we wouldn't say was the same as being in possession of a substance. So we were seeing it as actual, physical, tangible, something that's in a pocket, that's in a backpack, versus running through your blood system.
I guess the other point of that as well is that they just have to demonstrate that they have a policy in place. So how they're actually going to administer that policy is going to be up to each shelter. But for purposes of getting a license, they have to demonstrate that they have a policy in place that approaches each of those items.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else have any questions of staff? Yes, Mr. Dupree?
A question in regards to the conditional use. Is there any supervision of this after a six-month period of time, whether to continue with it or deny it?
So typically with our conditional use permits, once you have the permit, you have the permit. In this case, we're suggesting that it would be limited to a two-year period because the application was for a two-year temporary facility, and that then at that point, they would have to come back if they wanted to continue. So, but normally, no. You've granted other conditional use permits that have no timeline limitation, that are, you know, just good for the duration of the business.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Pine?
For the police comments and the staff comments section here, is there a longer-form answer, or is it, or was this the comment provided back from?
That was the comment verbatim from police, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, just clarity on, you know, what specifically is being undermined, and yeah, what, you know, greater clarity on that could be useful.
Yes, Mr. Marcott?
I had a similar question, maybe from a different aspect. I was wondering if there's a period of time, and if this is the time, or later, when we can ask the individuals here that represent the police department to get up and speak to this issue.
If there's anyone from the police department that could answer that question, we would, we could ask them now, because they're staff, not...
Yeah, okay. That's why I was wondering if it should be done during this staff question period or during...
Is there anyone from the police department that would be able to answer that question? Doesn't appear...
I'd like to hear from the assistant city administrator, who is a former police chief.
Okay. Mr. O'Malley, would you speak to that, please, for us? Thank you.
Yeah, I can't answer that. I heard that statement when it was read to you, so I don't know what the police department... I know they had some input, but I wasn't involved in it all, Mr. Marcott. I can't address that.
So according to the news article this weekend, a police chief, I guess I haven't kept up with who the police chief was. I remembered the name, I just wanted to quote it right. So according to Police Chief David St. Pierre, and then it continues to talk about...
I did read that article. They did discuss the calls for service, but I, again, was not involved in that response, so I don't know all the details of the calls.
So there's a lack of communication between the departments and the administration?
There is not a lack of communication, Mr. Marcott. I was not involved in the inquiry from the newspaper.
Okay. Well, seems like communication is the theme of the year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay. In that case, I would invite Mr. McMurray to come up, if he'd like, and anyone else who is involved in the project that would like to address us? Kilmurray. Oh, I'm sorry. Kilmurray. I'm terrible with names. I really apologize. If you would introduce yourselves, and then go for it.
My name is Chris Kilmurray. I'm the executive director of Lewiston Housing.
My name is Silas Levitt. I'm the development project manager with Lewiston Housing.
We're here tonight to look for a conditional use permit. I'm assuming you guys have significant questions for us? I'm not sure if you're looking for a presentation on the documents that we gave you already, or how you'd like to proceed on this?
It's up to the board. I'd like to, Mr. Marcott?
I'd like a presentation. This item took me quite by surprise in the agenda, and of course, seeing the article last night, I had to revisit the package, and there's a lot of stuff in this agenda, in some cases, within individual agenda items and overall. So I would like to hear a presentation on both aspects that we're being asked to make a motion.
Sure. Silas, you want to start us off?
Yeah. All right. So I guess I'll talk first through the general site plan for the building, and then go through the floor plan, and then the specific conditional use permit options. Great. And then through the development review standards as well. All right, so she's bringing up the site plan. Okay, so you can see the site plan of the existing building floor plan for the former Sun Journal offices. The plan right now is to have the offices for shelter staff, as well as the congregate housing, as well as congregate housing, or congregate beds for female guests of the shelter to be located in the front of the building, and then congregate housing for men, and the bathrooms to be located in the rear of the building, if you want to go to the floor plan. So here you can see the existing floor plan of the building. The left side is that rear warehouse space, and the right side is the front office space. So Park Street would be on the far right, where the LHA Temporary Homeless Shelter words are. So most of the existing cubicles and offices will be converted to office space for the shelter staff. We're estimating somewhere around six shelter staff, as well as a couple of housing ambassadors provided by LHA and the Immigrant Resource Coalition. Then the female congregate beds to keep the male and female shelter guests separate. The female shelter beds will be located in that large central cubicle area in the office space, and the male congregate beds located in the warehouse space at the rear of the building. We're also planning to locate the temporary bathrooms that Shelley mentioned. We are picturing those to be, you know, showers and bathrooms like you would find in like a festival trailer. And the idea is that depending on the cost effectiveness, we could either rent them or purchase them, in which case, if we purchased them, they would be an asset for the city to use going forward after the temporary shelter use has completed. There's also going to be an outdoor recreation area. Currently, that's located at the rear of the building, and obviously, any lighting that we would put there would be according to the city ordinances, and making sure to not make it above the height requirements and to have the downcast lighting. Then I'm just going to talk through the specific standards for conditional use permits. So talking about the neighborhood impact, you know, the size of the proposed use. So most of these questions are going to be not quite applicable to what the type of project is, because it's not a subdivision, it's just a single building. But in terms of the neighborhood impact, the size of the proposed use is comparable to surrounding uses. The existing building onsite will not change size, and the amount of people in and out of the building will be similar or smaller in number to when the building was used, as at Lewiston Sun Journal offices. No additional vehicle traffic will be generated, nor new expanses of pavement. You know, there's no parking required, so the number of parking spaces necessary will not change. And there's probably no additional noise, dust, vibration, glare, or smoke will be created by the proposed use. In terms of other nuisances, the shelter will operate in accordance with the shelter manager's Community Concepts Inc.'s policies and procedures. The policies are intended to protect both the health and safety of the shelter guests and the shelter staff, as well as the peace and quiet of the surrounding neighborhood. Given the site's location in the Centreville District, as well as the proposed development's lack of impact on the existing site footprint, we believe that there will be no impact on the use, quality, and quantity of the groundwater available to surrounding properties. The site and the building footprint are not changing from the previous use. The site has no unusual physical characteristics, and the proposed development will not cause any adverse soil or topography impacts on the surrounding properties. There's a similar theme with questions about vehicular access. There's going to be no interior vehicular access to the site because it's a single lot with a single building. The exterior vehicular access will be through the rear overhead doors, which the Lewiston Housing Authority has access to because we own some of the surrounding properties. In terms of the burden to municipal facilities, the building is already connected to city sewage and water supply, and so no additional connections will be, will not be established. Furthermore, the inclusion of the temporary bathrooms that we are, have mentioned, would sort of further alleviate any possible impact on the sewage-water supply. The proposed development's not going to change the exterior footprint of the existing building onsite. There's going to be no change to the existing stormwater capacity. The ability of the fire department to provide necessary protection services to the site and the development remains adequate and will not be affected by changes to the building or the site use. The development team will consult with the city fire marshals to make sure that any changes to the interior of the building are to code and do not negatively impact the ability of the fire department or other emergency services to do their jobs. Site soil impact, there's not going to be any impact on the site soil. Scale and massing impact, there's not going to be a change to the scale and massing of the building. So those are all the criteria for the conditional use permit being granted. For the development review criteria, just running through them all very quickly since most of them are not applicable to this project. The plan for, in terms of utilization of the site, the plan for the development of the Lewiston Unhoused Response Center reflects the natural capabilities of the site and takes advantage of the existing site features to minimize the number of site changes required to shift the use to a homeless shelter. The existing shelter's office space can be easily utilized to support the office and meeting spaces requirement for the shelter staff, and the open spaces of the newsroom and the printing press space lend themselves to bed placement, and the larger space allowing optimal bed placements for the shelter guests, and those, the floor plans that we discussed. In terms of traffic movement into and out of the site, there's going to be no vehicular movement into and out of the site. The temporary bathrooms will need to be delivered to the rear of the site, as well as all of the materials necessary to convert the building into the shelter space. In terms of community access into the site, this is not an applicable concern. The site will be not for, you know, the access to the site will be for shelter guests only, you know, the unhoused population in Lewiston. There's not going to be regular community people wandering through the site unless they have need of the services. Same with the internal vehicular circulation. This is not an applicable concern. In terms of pedestrian circulation, this is not an applicable concern. There's going to be no outside pedestrian circulation to the site unless they're utilizing the services. In terms of stormwater management, the site is only the one building, and we're not changing the exterior floor plan or the, like, impervious surface cover, so there's going to be no additional impact on stormwater management other than what currently exists on the site. For erosion control, the site is a single building on a lot that's almost entirely impervious surfaces, so there's no necessary need for erosion control. Water supply, the site is an existing building, it's already connected to the Lewiston water supply, so we're not anticipating any significant impacts from the site there. Sewage disposable, that's the same thing. It's already connected to the city of Lewiston system, and so we're not anticipating any impacts there. In terms of utilities, the site's an existing building that's already connected to the Lewiston, you know, electricity and gas supply, so we're not anticipating any changes there. However, we're going to be applying for utility use permits and plumbing permits before the rehab of the site begins and before we open the site to guests. Natural features, no natural features are going to be affected by the development on the site because we're not changing the exterior of the building at all. Groundwater protection, the site has no onsite sewage or water supply storage, and there will be no need for additional groundwater protection measures. Water and air pollution, the, any development changes to the site will take place entirely within the existing building onsite, and so the proposed use will not result in any undue water-air pollution. Exterior lighting, we are planning to add some lighting to the rear recreation area. However, there are no street intersections, pedestrian crossings, or entrance roads to the site, and thus no need for additional lighting. The lighting that we do install in the rear area will be according to city ordinances. Waste disposal, specific waste disposal on the site will be handed according to Community Concepts policies and procedures for the center, and then we will also work to ensure that any hazardous waste, especially generated during the sort of rehabilitation phase of the project, will be disposed of at a licensed hazardous waste disposal facility. And per city ordinances, the development team will provide evidence of a contractual arrangement with an appropriate licensed facility before rehab on the site begins. Lot layout, I went over the site plan already. Landscaping, the outdoor recreation area at the site... Landscaping, the outdoor recreation area at the site, we're considering it to be a sort of low end cups, impact space consisting of temporary tables, benches, shade umbrellas, and possibly some planters to sort of add some greenery and delineate the space from the outside and make sure that it's a sort of private enclosed space. Shoreland relationship, there's no relationship with the site to the shoreland. Open space, I mentioned the rear outdoor recreation space already on the plan. Technical and financial capacity, so both the applicant, Lewiston Housing Authority and Community Concepts Inks have technical experience in the owning and operation of emergency shelter spaces like the one proposed in this development review. The money for the project comes from a grant from the main housing, main housing authority, and LHA has already won the grant amount necessary to proceed, which is $3.8 million. The bulk of that is going to be for operational costs for the project with $350,000 designated for construction. There's going to be no additional costs to Lewiston taxpayers. The project lifespan is two years, so that grant money covers the entire lifespan of the project. And it is our intention over that two-year period to find a more suitable site in the city for a permanent shelter. Buffering, the site contains only one building that covers the majority of the site, so we're proposing no changes to the exterior make of the building and no additional buffering should be necessary. However, you know, the development team shall comply with all necessary guidelines and regulations. Same with the IIM compliance with district regulations. You know, the proposed use of emergency shelter on this space meets the requirements of the shelter overlay district where the building site exists, and the development team will ensure that operational use remains consistent with district regulations, design consistent with performance standards. I've attached, please see the attached floor plans up there. Development team will ensure that the project complies with all performance standards in sofar as they may be applicable. And yeah, that's it.
All right. In that case, I will ask for questions, comments from the board. Mr. Markott, you seem to.
Mr. Pine.
Yeah, before we get into this site, I'm wondering if maybe staff and then also the applicant could provide a little more context around the buildings surrounding this parcel or this project? Just to provide additional context for our discussion and then also for what seems to be some pretty vigorous public comment that we're going to have later. I guess I'll start off with saying it looks like, you know, there's this central building that's going to be used for this use, but then there are other buildings attached to it either through that breezeway to the more modern office building as well as, you know, surrounding parking areas, things like that. So maybe the place we should start is what other properties does LHA own around this project?
Topographical map would be.
Oh, sorry.
There we go. So the breezeway here, just so you know, is cut off. It's not open anymore. It's a closed-off structure. This building, we own 40 to 60 Pine, which runs from one end of Park Street to the other. That will be the future location of the DeWitt site, DeWitt Choice site, which will be getting developed, which will be 104 units of mixed income and mixed income housing, and it will have 14,000 square feet of commercial space on the first floor of that. As part of this parcel, we own these two lots right here and then also 61 Ash Street, which is located right up here. The only two parcels that we don't own on the block are the post office and then this rooming house, which is located at the top of the block.
And then the ownership for the post office extends, I'm assuming, to the wall of this building?
Yeah, it's a fairly tight line here. I don't, this isn't survey material right here, but it is very close to where, where it is. I think this line actually is a little off from where they own. It actually gets closer to this side, but I don't have a survey here to show you that.
Gotcha. And since this property, you know, the, the project is a temporary shelter, I'm assuming the property overall was acquired for other uses.
Yeah, the property, we, when we acquired this property, the shelter, RFP, we had no idea it was coming out, didn't know it existed. The property was required because, you know, we were already investing, whoops, roughly $40 million next door is what it'll end up being for the Choice properties. It was a sensible investment for us to move forward and look at this as, although we aren't funded through another Choice grant, as a Choice Two type lot where we could develop additional mixed-use, mixed-income properties on the site to be able to proliferate our need for a significant amount of additional housing.
And, and I'm assuming those plans still stand, so once this temporary shelter goes away, there's plans to redevelop the building that it's located in either by demolishing it or rehabbing the building?
The plans are still in the infancy at this point in time. The goal for us, as it's been all along, and how we put in our FAQs, is this is a temporary location. This makes sense for us right now because these buildings are vacant all around this property right now. This is an opportunity for us to be able to help people who are in need right now, but the long-term goal for this property is to develop additional housing and additional commercial space to, to, to work with the existing space that's downtown.
And do you expect construction for the rest of the lot along Pine Street? The separate project, for that to commence while the shelter's in operation?
Yes, that will be happening while it's in operation, but that, one, that project isn't even financed yet. It's still a project, like, there's no 4% program right now that exists through Mainstate Housing Authority, waiting for that to come back out. That's the only, that's the only program that will be able to finance the project that will ultimately go there. Once it's financed, the construction time, you know, there's a lead time to get through that financing and the construction timeline for two buildings that will hold 104 units and 14,000 square feet will be well over a year and a half. So we're three years away at best from somebody moving into that property. It's likely more like three and a half years before anything happens at that property in terms of a person moving into it, into an apartment.
And so, so given that those properties are going to be vacant, not used for anything for the foreseeable future until financing is secured and then once financing's secured, it's going to be?
I was thinking about, I just want to be clear. I was talking about 40 to 60 Pine right here, where Choice is going to happen. Are you referencing now these properties here?
Oh, no, no, 40 to 60 Pine, yeah.
Yes, those properties, this property right here does have one applicant, one person that's still working in there. Take Two is still located there right now, Goodwill, and will be, once we commence, they get URA funds from us for the relocation of this, so we'll be finding them a new location. We're in constant talks with them about this.
Gotcha, and so that building's going to be demolished?
Yes, both those buildings will get demolished.
Got it.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? Ms. Cox?
I can yield to Amy, I think she had her hand up before me.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
No worries. So I just wanted to check my timeline here. So if you get conditional use in May 2023 and according to the letter, it needs to be open for operation by October 2023, so that would give you four to five months to do the rehab? And then if it opens in October 2023, it's done September 2025, fully vacated, done.
That's the goal.
And so how, how will we know that that's going to happen?
Well, we're only funded for two years. So I can, I can tell you that we're funded for two years and our goal is to work with the city and the community to find a place where we can pivot to, to create a long-term solution for the city. That's something we all need to work on together to figure out where that's going to go and how we're going to do it.
Agreed. My other question is, in that four to five months, for $350,000, I'm curious where that number came from because that seems very low to me. That's the full capital. And then just a follow-on question to make sure that I'm understanding. I also understand that the initial budget was $6.4 million for the two years. You got $3.7 million. The operating expense stayed the same, sorry, capital expense stayed the same at 350, so that removed 2.7 million from your operating budget?
Yeah, we originally had 75 beds contemplated for the space, thinking that we would be able to help more, more women and families that are in need of services, and Main Housing did not have funding available for that. The number got chopped back down to $3.7 million, at which time that made sense for the 37 beds that we're contemplating now.
Okay, so that reduction is in space, basically?
That reduction, well, we, yeah, we potentially, we're going to use the second floor of that for families to be able to provide them services. So the reduction is really in staff capacity, be able to handle additional people that would be in a building that is already, it's already, the infrastructure's there. The reason that the number's so low is that the building already fits well and what we need to do is basically just outfitting the second floor for families if we were going to do that.
Okay, thanks. Okay.
And I would like to add that it would be great to be able to add services for families in the future. There's still a significant need for that, and we'd like to be able to figure out how to layer that in at some point in time, but the funds are not there through this grant right now. Not that it isn't important, it doesn't need to be done.
Ms. Cox?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the timeline, Amy.
Yeah, thanks.
Well, so I'm, I'm going to name a thing that I'm hoping we can discuss prior to public comment so that when we come to making motions, that we can have a agreed-upon number that's feasible for the applicant and that the board understands. But you opened, Shelley, with a conversation about the project being given two years to commence, and I don't see, based on the grant agreement and everything else that's in here, that anything beyond a year, and realistically nine months is twice as much time as they're being allocated, though it was really clear that Mainstate Housing was also saying, we give ourselves the ability to extend this. But I don't, I definitely don't feel that two years to commence makes sense, given the need, the urgency that is a temporary shelter, and I would recommend to my colleagues on the board that we looked at a nine to 12-month timeframe for commencement. I just wanted to get a gut check on that and make sure that made sense to the applicant too, based on the old documents that you've provided in the grant agreement.
Are you saying cannot start before nine to 12 months or will start within nine to 12?
Must start.
Yes, totally comfortable with that.
Yeah. Okay, does it make sense? All right.
Mr. Markott?
Yeah, I was going to ask something along those lines myself. I had several questions, I don't know if I can recall them all at the same time, but I was not comfortable with two years to start. I had written down one year, so not nine months to a year, sounds good to me. I was also curious, so you'd be occupying basically what appears to be two sections on the front from 104 Park Street? Not the distribution center?
Correct.
Where the press rooms were or the parking lot?
Where the press rooms are, yes. Where the distribution center is, no. Press room is part of the application.
The press room is sort of in between.
Yeah, the press room is the center lower, the, the light brown color.
When you're inside, it's hard to tell when you're going from one section to the next.
Actually, it's very well defined in there as to where you're going in between the two of them.
I worked there for 19 years. And so I just wanted to know how much of the building you're going to occupy because when I first saw any suggestion of this, I was thinking it was going to be the whole thing. I thought it was going to be a permanent location. I'm hearing something different tonight. But as far as the ownership of parcels, it would include the entire three sections and the parking lot.
That we own, yes.
That you own. And I guess I was initially curious, but maybe not so much at this point, that you're not going to do anything to the exterior of the building?
No, well, other than lighting.
Other than lighting. In part because you don't plan on occupying it for more than two years.
Correct, not for this purpose.
And, and the grant money is, stated in here is 3.8, and I had remembered 3.7 from somewhere earlier.
3.7 is the number.
And 350 is separate or included in that?
Included.
Included. And that's enough to basically remodel the first and second floors?
There's not a lot of remodel that needs to be done. The building, it's adding a couple, you know, it's, it's giving us the ability to take care of the bathrooms and whatever iteration comes out when we're dealing with code, which is going to be the biggest expense that we deal with in most of this. And it gives us some buffer to take care of any partitions or walls that we need to put up at one point in time, get beds set up for people in there. And then it also gives us some buffer money just in case there's some mechanical issue that takes place during our time period of being in there.
It's an old building with many revisions over the years, and like someone else said, probably has better skills than I do in understanding how much it costs to rehab.
I, I would just say, it's not a rehab, and that's one of the reasons that this was a site that was selected by Mainstate Housing Authority. This is a functioning building that didn't have, has very few sunk costs, which was important to them. The dollars are going to the operations and the people that are in need, not to the building.
I'm a little shocked at operational costs being $3.8 million or 3.8 less than the 350 for two years. Because the building is old and tired, and especially with the, the guts of the building. Like I said, it's there for 19 years. I, I know I had another question somewhere with regards to that, but I can wait if somebody else has questions.
I think Ms. Cox had a few more questions.
I do, but I'm happy to follow up.
Roger, Mr. Dupree, did you have some?
Yes, I'd like to address the concerns from the Lewiston Police Chief in regards to the number of calls that they made to the previous temporary location. Now, Community Concepts is going to be running this, managing this, is that correct?
Correct.
Is that coming under your control?
We are the holder of the grant, so we technically own the, we have the contract with CCI, yes.
So if Community Concepts was running the same location at the church, are they going to be running this one as well?
Yes.
How are you going to address the fact that the Lewiston Police Department made so many calls?
I think you can't compare the two situations. I think putting the two together is a little unfair to compare the two. The, the temporary shelter, the warming shelter, was set up on a shoestring in the 11th hour and CCI to the, should be getting thanked by the city for stepping up and taking something that they were asked to do in the, in the last minute to essentially save people's lives. Comparing those two, they're in a building that is inappropriately sized and understaffed. They have a bud, they have a budget of roughly $300,000 in a building that is a, barely a, a corner of what we have here to house the population that's coming through there on a regular basis. Apples and oranges, you can't compare the two. They have a volunteer staff that they're dealing with mostly. It's, it, yeah, I would, I would say it is wildly unfair to be comparing those two situations. This is a, going to be a, a fully staffed professional facility where there's people there who can provide service to these people 24 hours a day. That is not the case of what was put together at the warming shelter, and everybody knew that going into it. And it was done literally in the 11th hour that this was put together. So not, not the same. So I can understand your concern, I could understand why the question would be asked, but I think it is not a fair question to ask because the two situations are, are not equal.
If this should happen, how are you going to address it?
Of course. I mean, we want to have the best outcome here as well. We're not looking to cause problems for the city, we're looking to solve problems for the city. We're looking to try and help a situation that is fairly untenable right now, being completely unaddressed. So I would think that our hope is to be able to, to put up a situation where people can come, get services, get help, find a place to sleep, and ultimately be successful. Yes, our, our goal is to, to try and make sure that these are positive outcomes here.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Cox?
I have two specific questions. One is, and I appreciate this still being up, the way in which I think I understand it with this overlay versus the, well, and this black and white rendition that I've got here, the outdoor area, will the outdoor area that's proposed actually come onto 40 Pine?
Yeah, a little bit.
Is that addressed in, when we make a conditional use permit for 104 Park Street and we approve a portion for outdoor space, which is important, and I appreciate the care in screening that outdoor space, will people actually be able to be in the outdoor space related to the homeless shelter if it resides on a different parcel than the one which we're voting on? Just want to make sure we're all set.
Yeah, no, since they are in the same ownership, I don't think that's a problem. We typically do have projects that have multiple properties or parcels.
So we're approving a specific conditional use relying on an overlay district? And so the use would be extended to a small portion of 40 Pine as indicated by the plans provided to the board? That may be a way to think about framing whatever approval might be offered tonight and how it's constrictive to a specific area?
Yeah, should we include that as a can, a condition or part of the motion? Because that is a separate property?
I don't want to be in a position where an important corner parcel has now got a bleed over conditional use. Not that I hear that's your request, Mr. Kilmari, but I want to make sure that our process is tight.
Yeah, good question. I think the applicant, the applicant's materials and staff's review don't address the fact that there is a second parcel being impacted by this request, so if you wanted to change your motion to specify that, I think that would clean things up, or, you know, when, when the board makes a motion.
Right, so this would be the conditional, would it be in, in both? We would have to address it in both? We would have to address it in both, correct?
Development review and condition.
I think it's in prime that you weigh in as the applicant.
Yeah, I would just say, we, you know, we could, there is an extension off of the 104 Park rear section that is part of the parcel that we could move this to and move it there. And then it makes the issue move. And so we're happy to do that. It's a similar-sized space. I was just trying to make traffic patterns of people make sense, which is why we pulled it down to that corner. But if you have concerns about it, it already has green space there. It's not a big deal. It's part of that, you know, for us to move it up there. It's the exact similar size. And we literally just moved it because the doors that were located at that section, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, isn't it, wouldn't they have to go through the distribution center to get out there?
No, there's a, there's a overhead door and a side door right at the upper right-hand corner of that building. So they have access and would just simply need to walk out in that little pink corner that comes down at an angle. They could walk right through there over to that section, and it's part of the same parcel.
You're, you're propose, as proposed in the site plans, the existing building on 40 Pine offers more visible screening. So I can see why you would recommend it in addition to your structural choices. I just, and, and, should I have my druthers? I prefer the original plan, though nice green space on your actual parcel. I just wanna make sure that as we approve this, you're not in a position where you can't actually move forward with the green space, which feels important. And I'd like for us to address it fully.
I appreciate it.
We'll give them a minute. If they need more than a minute, I can ask my second question.
Fire away.
If you ask your second question, give them a chance to chat while, while decide on the first one.
I think we're, Lucy read extra stuff tonight because philosophical opinions and our charge in role are, could be two separate things this evening, or any evening that the planning board speaks. So I'm gonna wade into that water. We have a desperate need for family housing. In fact, one of the issues that our current lack of homeless shelters provide is that almost all of them serve predominantly men. We only have a few that serve women. We have zero that serve families. And given the nature of some of the, of the concerns that you will hear from business owners, that I've been hearing from constituents, that people will probably speak to tonight, I, and I would love for you to correct me with data if I'm wrong, a lot of the issues that come with that population comes with the same population for which you've allocated the most amount of bed space to. And are least with the place in which you have allocated zero bed space to, and that's family shelters. So can you tell me more about how you made the decision to prioritize and allocate the space, not only to the population that often comes with more concerns and safety issues and is already being addressed by our existing, though, though lacking homeless shelter system?
We have a homeless shelter system. It's clearly inadequate. A majority of the people who are homeless happen to be men, and they happen to fall into that category. I agree wholeheartedly that there needs to be opportunities and spaces made for women and families. And it's something that we're working on, and it was part of our original grant because that was incredibly important to us. And we will continue to look for resources to be able to add that in at some point in time because it actually goes above and beyond. The ordinance, I believe, the way the ordinance is written and the way we interpreted it, if we actually serve a different population than is already served, we can go above and beyond the 37 beds that are available, which is what our original plan was. But the reality is, while those needs are there, the majority of the people who are on the streets right now fall into the category that you were referencing. It's mostly men, mostly, mostly people that represent the group that you were just talking about. So, we're trying to take care of the population that is least served right now or has the most need, additional need, I shouldn't say least.
Most unmet need.
The unmet need.
Because the family proposition is zero served.
Right, it is. And we hear that. I mean, I was talking to the Center for Wisdom's Women the other day, and the amount of women that they have, single moms coming through with no place to go is a travesty. Like, there's literally nowhere for them to go. But the reality is, the most unmet need that we have is in the male and the single male population or single female population that exists that are out there right now. That doesn't mean that, agree that there needs to be a family solution for this, and we'll continue to try and find one.
Mr. Pine?
Just to be clear, when you say unmet need, you're specifically talking about gross number of people?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that's clear for the record.
And have we come to any conclusions? Mr. Hediger or Ms. Norton, have we come to a conclusion as to the green space?
So, we think that there should be a condition of approval. While we have looked it up and it is under their ownership, and it is also in the shelter overlay district, we could add that as a condition of approval so the application is complete, that they demonstrate right title and interest to 40 Pine Street prior to the, you know.
Issuance of a building permit?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Can you say that again, Shelley?
Yeah, that the applicant would demonstrate right title and interest to 40 Pine Street prior to the issuance of a building permit.
I appreciate that language. I don't believe it addresses my concern.
Okay.
I don't think there's any dispute that the applicant owns 40 Pine Street. I think the concern is to ensure that the amount of use for this conditional use onto a property that's not stated in tonight's application is limited to that which we're seeing on the site plans. That's my specific concern. I don't know if it's shared by others, but that's my specific concern. And so while I can absolutely, or anyone could absolutely use the right title and interest language, I think it's more about before the certificate of occupancy is approved, the green space is defined on 40 Pine Street in alignment with that, which is the site plan presented before the board today.
So the site plan does show it?
Yes, and I wanna make sure that we are approving that amount that is on the site plan used from 40 Pine, so that we don't approve it. I'm, this is just doing the right thing and is not about you, sir. But that it doesn't triple in size, that the outdoor, this is about restricting the size and use for a second parcel of property to that which has been proposed here today and is not addressed by ownership in the application.
Now I understand. So, there could be a condition that the extent of the enclosed outdoor green space.
Be limited to what's on the plan?
Be limited to what's shown on C 1.1.
Do you think that addresses, okay, that'll address you? Okay, Ms. Smith?
Just one question on that. So, I know that DeWitt new construction is supposed to go in right next door. So is that parcel also spoken for by the DeWitt plan? Like, do we have overlap between these two things, the outdoor space and?
By the applicant's, by the applicant's concession, we would not see that. Not the use of, and maybe construction, but not construction starting for another 18 months.
Right, but would, would it limit in any way DeWitt getting approval for moving forward if there was a portion of the parcel that was being used by something else for two and a half years?
I think at that point, when it came before the planning board, the DeWitt project for approval, the applicant would be addressing their current use and the timeline for that ceasing and how their construction is being staged and where it's happening. So they would be required to demonstrate, if there is an overlap in timing, how that's being addressed so that the two projects, or, you know, the two activities could coexist for whatever the overlap of timing was.
And I would just add, we, we don't have any of that information on the DeWitt piece yet of what staging is going to look like, how, what site work is gonna look like. We just don't have those things at this point in time.
It's a little early in the process for that particular project.
Yes, extremely early.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Markham?
With respect to the green space, are you removing pavement?
No.
So you're just gonna put planters out there or something?
Yes.
Is that gonna be fenced in?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And is, there's a third floor, not to 104 Park Street, right?
There is. It has no utilities with it. It's basically, there's two conference rooms that don't have any heat and then a bunch of storage.
And someone, whether it's LHA or Community Concepts, someone's gonna carry all of the applicable insurances?
Of course.
Fire and casualty liability, et cetera?
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? Ms. Cox?
I have one final question for staff before we open public comment, and I'm not alone. Shelley, can you please show us and the audience the complete geography of the shelter overlay district?
Sure.
You're gonna have to zoom out.
And Lucy, while she's looking that up, based upon the question that was just asked about the enclosed open space being fenced in and given Shannon's concerns about the specificity of the site plan, you might wanna add to that condition that it's gonna be fenced in as well. And if there's any detail with that.
Okay, thank you.
I was just unclear. I think the application said there would be shrubs put in. The applicant, it sounds like fencing or shrubs, so maybe we.
My original intent was fencing. I didn't read through it in detail in advance of it. I think fencing makes the most sense for the utilization of it, so.
Yeah, I think for privacy sake and for the residents' privacy and anything else, yeah. I think fencing would be better.
Can, Mr. Kilmari, do you mind zooming in just enough so that the, this space? I don't know that we could get there. It's not like it tilts, but a little, a little less. We won't do this too many times, I promise. I just, I would like to say, yeah, just for the record, both for those who are here tonight and, and for my colleagues, when considering the shelter overlay district that came before this planning board and was approved at a previous date, we made a request to include or to look at a second shelter overlay district that was not exclusive to our heart of our downtown. And so as folks make concerns tonight about where, where we would place it, I would say to you, given this restriction of the green outlined area, where is there a place to address our unmet, unhoused population? And if not in this, might we all also raise our voice for additional options for shelter overlay districts that meet some of the needs of both the population as well as our business community and downtown residents? Thank you.
And I would just add that we support that wholeheartedly as we look forward for a permanent solution.
Mr. Pine?
I'm anticipating that some of the concerns in terms of disruption to the community are gonna center around folks loitering outside the facility or waiting outside the facility based on there being a lack of beds. Because as many people have pointed out, there's serious need here, and this, this will fill some of it, but not all of it. Is it too early at this point to speak to how it will be operated in terms of, you know, how people will be notified that there will be space? Or, you know, will they, will someone be expected to have to just wait there until they can get a space in there? Or will there be, will there be some defined process to make sure that folks just don't have to queue outside this building all the time?
It's a fair concern, and I can't answer that question. I can't, that's too early in the process for us going through this right now. But I can tell you, we will do our best to create a process that makes sense and doesn't have that impact.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Markham?
I have one last thing.
Okay.
Reglancing at the article from this weekend, I'd like to know how long you've been working with the mayor and staff with regards to this prior to the announcement?
So, we had many meetings with staff and city council members and, and some, and local, all the local nonprofits when we're leading up to the warming shelter. There were many, many conversations about homeless services and needs leading up to it. We didn't meet with them specifically about this, but I can tell you, the conversations always moved to a need for a long-term solution or a longer-term solution that we could create in the downtown. And the constant, the constant comment was always, "We need your help. We need, we don't have the money to pay for it, and we can't operate it. We're really looking for the, the public and the nonprofits and the, and the businesses in town to help us fulfill this need." When the RFP came out, we had incredibly tight window to respond on it. We called together some of those same nonprofits that were in the room that met with all those people, and we responded to it. I felt like we were responding to a call to action from the city, and I thought we were doing what was asked of us. We went out and got 3.7 million dollars of non-taxpayer dollars to solve a problem that everybody's been talking about and pointing about for a very long period of time with no solutions. So, did we work specifically with them on this? No. Did we have many, many, many conversations about this topic leading up to it? Yes.
Because my, my concern, as I mentioned earlier, is surprises. And when I read through the article, it sounds like people in the council were surprised. And that's a concern. There needs to be, like I said before, more communication with regards to things that are this impactful to the community.
We followed the rules that were laid out before us. I felt like we were responding to a call to action from the city. I didn't write the ordinance. I didn't create the overlay district. I responded to an applicant RFP that was put out there, and we successfully brought in 3.7 million dollars.
And I'm glad you mentioned the dollar amount again. So at the end of two years, I know that you're gonna be looking for a more permanent solution. But what, what happens then? Does the community become on the hook for extending this? If nothing, if nothing develops over those two years, is the community gonna be expected and requested to, to contribute to the ongoing of this particular facility or any other one?
We're looking, our goal is to find a long-term solution to this and work with the city and the public to figure out how we're gonna, where we're gonna put it, how we're gonna size it, what services are needed, and how it's going to be funded in the long run. There are ways and methods by which these are funded through the state. I can't speak to what the funding's gonna look like two years from now, but I know that we need to figure out how we're gonna do it, how we're gonna fund it. We're gonna do our best to make sure that that, those dollars don't come in large part from the city.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. In that case, if everybody's ready, we're gonna open it up to the public. And if you would step to the podium, if you wanna speak, you have three minutes, and you have one time to come up and speak. Please state your name and your address, and Mr. Hediger will be keeping, will be the timekeeper. And when he says you need to stop, you need to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Mr. Sattlemeyer?
My name's Craig Sattlemeyer. I live on Maple Street in Lewiston. Formerly the chair of the ad hoc shelter committee, and that's, I think, the, the primary perspective that I'm bringing to my testimony tonight. For what it's worth, I also serve on the Lewiston Auburn Area Housing Development Corporation, which is a subsidiary corporation of Lewiston Housing primarily focused on choice. So that's, that's just a disclosure of that, that relationship. But I'm, I'm supportive of the, of the proposal tonight. I'm excited to see that resources have been mobilized to meet some substantial recommendations that were in the committee's report. I think the questions that the planning board has been asking tonight are excellent. I mean, I think this has been a really great, great discussion, and some of the things I was thinking about saying have been pretty thoroughly covered at this point. I might put a finer point on a couple of things, some of which you've already said, but I guess I wanna reiterate, I think, for the benefit of just the public discourse for anyone who's watching or, or listening. I think no matter, I mean, so, you know, the need has been established. No matter where something like this is cited, it's gonna be hard. Like, this is a hard subject. There really is no ideal place to put it. I, I think, I'm looking forward to, with some more time, you know, if this gets up and running, taking the time to figure out what is the, you know, the, the best, you know, community-supported, long-term location for this. I think that's gonna be hard, you know, it's, it's always gonna be a hard thing to cite. Sort of, you can't put it anywhere without some degree of, at least initial, like, reaction from, from neighbors or folks who are concerned that they might be impacted by the, by the citing of this. And the point's already been made that, you know, finding the appropriate space within this boundary of the overlay is, is very difficult. And for anyone who isn't, who didn't follow those very lengthy community discussions we had around it, you know, that area looks big, but once you actually start looking at viable sites, it's very, very hard. And the fact that we have a building that is, that meets the overlay requirements and is, you know, vacant and in an area where there's already a lot of, you know, activity, where, you know, folks are, who are unhoused are trying to seek some degree of service, maybe where those services aren't programmed, like the library or just, you know, in the park, et cetera. It's, it's meeting folks where they're at and hopefully diverting them from, from some of those spaces that are not programmed for those services. Also briefly, I guess, we don't have the clock, so I don't know where I'm at on my time, but I guess I'd like to highlight that, the, what was that? Is that my time?
You can wrap it up.
I, I think that, I, I, I actually, I was there for, for some of the, the meetings. I mean, a lot, a lot of people were invited by the city to talk about. I mean, a lot of people were invited by the city to talk about, you know, how do we meet this short-term need? That eventually led to the warming center. I absolutely commend the folks that responded to the city's request of having, you know, private organizations step up to address that. I think the circumstances they were handed were, the challenges that they faced were pretty much inevitable between the design restraints of a vestry of a church being a warming center, the very little money and the very little time to set that up. It was kind of inevitable. And I think when the city asks private groups to take that kind of risk for the public benefit, you know, we really need to wrap our arms around and, like, thank and embrace and applaud folks that take those kinds of risks in the interest of the public benefit. I also think we should scrutinize, you know, what happened, learn from mistakes, and do better. So I absolutely support, you know, asking those critical questions, reflecting on what happened. And, you know, it doesn't mean that we should accept these, you know, accept consequences that are negative for the community. So I appreciate the questions as well. But I, you know, I do think that the city asked, some private groups responded in a very short period of time, and we're operating something that's actually very different from what we're talking about tonight. It was a warming center. It was not a place that fell under the licensing system and where people were sleeping, and we're going to have all these other programmatic elements to help them, you know, get the support they need. So it is, just noting a few other differences. Am I, I'm probably, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Heather Hunter, I'm the city administrator. I also live in Lewiston as well. I want to address planning board member Mr. DeBrie's question regarding the police calls and Mr. Kilmar's response as far as the operations on the warming center. I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Kilmar's response on it was a shoestring budget. It went, you know, we could not figure out a place to have a warming shelter. Both CCI and RRC met with us to establish such a warming shelter. And although it had some peaks and valleys, you know, as anything, when you're getting something up and running at quite a quick turnaround with a limited budget, I think they did a fantastic job. And I think probably the greater piece I would give both organizations is the weekly meetings and the status and the communication. And that allowed us to really look at things and pivot where we needed to pivot. You know, do we need to reallocate money towards more security? And that open communication, I think, is probably what got us to the finish line on that particular project. And I would certainly hope, moving forward with this project, that that open communication exists for all parties, including the city, because we want to be at the table as well. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor or against this project?
Good evening. Larry Pease, taxpayer of Lewiston, Maine, also a council member. I just have a couple of questions, and they are, what kind of, you say it's going to be a low barrier. What are your guidelines going to be on low barrier?
They're outlined in the city's ordinance, which she already read earlier this evening.
Okay. I haven't seen them, so I don't know, but thank you.
Mr. Pease, so sorry. I don't want you to use your three minutes up waiting for responses. We're happy to note your questions.
Excuse me. Could you repeat that, please?
Yes, I'm sorry. We're happy to note your questions, but if you wait for responses and get them, you probably won't get through most of them in your three minutes' time.
Okay. I'll just state them. Where it's going to be a two-year program, I guess it's timeframe for them to be eligible or in that unit is going to be just two years. How are they going to pick who goes in that facility? Are they dealing with Lewiston residents only that are homeless now? How are they going to contact them? Are they going to go meet them in person? How's that going to happen? And he also stated locating another suitable area. So I'm assuming that this is just going to be here a short while, and they're going to go look for a better place, a bigger place? I'd like to know what their thoughts are behind that. And as far as being notified of what's going on with the shelter, as a city councilor, I didn't know about it until the last minute. So I had no input or any information brought to me for this project. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to address a couple of Mr. Pease's questions. He asked, you asked about the, what are the criteria? It's written, it's that services will be denied and entry will be denied to anyone who carries weapons or exists violent behavior in possession of alcohol, illegal substances, and drug paraphernalia. Don't observe the shelter's safety rule, refuse to identify themselves, and have a known outstanding warrant for their arrest. That's that one. This is going to be a two-year temporary shelter. Within that timeframe, they're going to be looking to move the shelter elsewhere on a permanent basis. Correct, Mr. Kilmar? Okay. As to how they're going to contact and whether they're local people, Mr. Kilmar already addressed that they don't have those items in play right now. They're working, as they are working to remodel the shelter or the building, they will be addressing those concerns and how they're going to contact these people and who's going to be there. And I think I've gotten, I think I have addressed your questions pretty closely.
So if I understand this correctly, you're going to tentatively approve this project?
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm just answering your question, that it would be a two-year temporary shelter if it is approved.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
My name is Joshua Nagin. I'm a planning board member, and I live at 189 Summer Street, Lewiston, Maine. I just wanted to make a few comments. First and foremost, we absolutely need a shelter that is run by state of Maine standards. There's no question that we need a low-barrier shelter with 24-hour services and wraparound services. That said, the concern that I have is that it seems to fly in the face of the comp plan, our economic development strategies, the plans that we have around choice neighborhoods and revitalization efforts within our downtown. It also seems to work against the purpose and intent of the ordinance, which was to provide shelter services for a larger group of people. This seems to be a small group that served. There's questions about the dignity of the unhoused concerning congregate care without visitors, no showers, things like this. It's not exactly the type of structure that I was imagining. I do understand that it is a temporary shelter, though. And it does, I think, answer some questions, but this is more to the planning board. I think we need to better define and protect the areas we target for economic development. I think we need to be better positioned to protect the comp plan and the economic development goals of our city. I think that performance standards, including safety and security of the guests as well as the surrounding neighborhood and nuisances, need to be looked at. I think we should also be looking at redefining the process and removing the overlay district completely. And that said, I don't see how I personally, as a planning board member, if I was up there, could vote against the conditional use permit based on the limited role and purview that we have in this. But these other concerns are major concerns for me, and I wanted to voice them.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against this project?
My name is Fitcham Hussein, and I am the director at the Immigrant Resource Center of Maine. I am here in support of the temporary shelter. We've worked so hard at the request of the city for months and weeks and weeks to be able to put up the warming center. We operated the warming center. I am very outraged at the city administration for them to throw us under the bus. We worked extremely very hard to be able to get homeless folks warmed up, right, from midnight to 8:00 a.m., conduct them to services, feed them, making sure that they had the dignity that they deserved. And so the shelter is no different from that. The warming center was a pilot project, and the pilot project was to look at the needs of shelter and homelessness in the city. Lewiston has never addressed homelessness in the 22 years that I've been doing this work. For us to be thrown under the bus? If the article needs to be correct, they need to come to us and ask for data, because we have that data. We know exactly who we served. We know exactly what we did. We know all the police calls that came to us. We know all the overdoses that came to us. I think Lewiston needs to say thank you to all the nonprofit organizations that serve them every year, every day. Since July of 2022 to December of 2022, we spent $2.2 million to be able to get residents of Lewiston rental assistance. Right now, as I speak, every day we have two navigators upstairs. In the last three months, they housed more than 28 families here in Lewiston. We need to be applauded. We need to have an apology, and people have to say thank you to us. And that's exactly why we went after Maine Housing, to secure $3.7 million that Lewiston couldn't afford to be able to address that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make any comments?
My name is Carl Shaleen. I live at 11 Pine Street. I also serve as Lewiston's mayor. Just a word about the temporary warming center. The temporary warming center served our city's most vulnerable population and stood up in a dire emergency situation. I'm grateful for the community partners that came forward to make it happen. These organizations deserve our city's thanks for their steadfast efforts to help our unhoused community members during the coldest winter nights. And I think most of you know that I am in complete support of the proposal before you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make any comments or questions? In that case, I'll close it to the public, and I will return it to the board. Any questions and comments from anyone? Ms. Cox?
There was one that Councilor Pease offered that I am also curious about, and I don't think that we've gotten to during tonight's conversation. Do you have a predicted duration of stay per person in the shelter? Somebody comes in on your first day of opening, you'll keep them there for two years? Or do you have, aside from goals of moving people to bed air and more stable housing, is there a duration of stay limit for the shelter?
As of right now, I can't say that we have a duration of stay limit, but that is something that we could talk about as part of our policies and procedures. But I would think, no, there would be no limitation to sending somebody on their way if they had need for shelter during that time period.
But to recap, both for Councilor Pease and a question that Amy brought up earlier, the assurance that we have that you would not be there past two years, and thus the temporary residents or guests of your facility, is that the conditional use permit would expire?
Mr. Pine?
To follow up on that comment, on Member Cox's comment, just for clarity from staff, you know, we're looking, and I'm just sort of repeating this more for record and for the audience and anyone who's going to watch this later, we're looking at just the conditional use permit tonight to allow this project to start moving forward at this site. In terms of licensing it for operation, that responsibility lies with the city council. Is that correct? And so order of operation here, they have site plans, they've brought it to us. We're going to vote on the conditional use permit, on whether or not they can move forward with the project. Once that happens, if it does pass, then it will go to the city council, and they will deliberate on the license to operate.
There's another step. There's also, there's the conditional use permit, and then there's the application for the temporary housing. So there's going to be two votes.
Gotcha. So we're voting on what you just outlined?
Correct.
And then after, if those both go through, then it goes to city council, and that's where they will get their license, and that is where the questions around operation, internal policies of the facility are likely to be debated. Is that sort of how this should work out?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that's very clear for the record and for folks watching in.
Yeah, certainly. When it goes to the city council for license, at that point, they'll need to demonstrate that they have the, you know, the required policies or procedures that make them a homeless shelter, not a no-barrier shelter under our definitions.
Okay. I would also like to address Mr. Nagin's comment on the, you know, not fitting into our comprehensive plan. There really isn't a shelter option in the comprehensive plan. So this is something that was not addressed when the comprehensive plan was discussed. Any other questions or comments on the board? Yes, Mr. Markot?
At least one question, one comment. Just earlier, when Councilor Pease was asking about the definition of low barrier, I was trying to look for it. I'm not sure if it's in any of our paperwork.
Yeah, it's right here.
On what page?
It's on the, it's on the second page of the items that we were given.
The cover letter from staff?
Correct.
So it is there? Okay.
It is there. That's what I was reading from.
Because I was simply waiting to hear, like, the chapter, so that we could go look at it later.
No, no, it's right there.
Okay, I see it now.
It's right at the top of the page. And that's no barriers after that.
So there is a definition available for anybody who's not interested.
Absolutely.
And I'm glad that the chair clarified that there's a two-step process tonight, the conditional use permit, and the second one is actually zoning and land use code.
Correct.
Whether all of the necessary standards have been met or the criteria contained in, which, like Board Member Nagin said from the podium, yeah, it meets. I mean, I may have some heartburn over agreeing to either of these motions tonight, but the fact is, it does meet all of the criteria that was put into place by both the planning board and subsequently the city council for overlay districts and zoning and use and so on and so forth. So I think that was all I had.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Smith?
Just one comment. I'm sure I speak on behalf of the planning board. We do thank you so much for all the work that you and Community Concepts put into this. It's an incredibly challenging and difficult type of a facility to run. And moving forward, I'm really hopeful that we will have excellent transparency, excellent collaboration among all the parties, because in our work on the shelter committee, it became very clear that, you know, it's truly a community effort to make this happen. So thank you very much.
Are we ready for a motion?
Well, let me add one more time.
Because I had a question.
Yeah, we're almost ready for the motion.
Leads up to it, okay. So my question is, I'm hoping that Member Cox has made the notes for additional conditions. And I was curious, earlier, I was noting that the staff comments included an A and a B. One was about the downlighting, which I believe was originally number five in the conditions. And there was one concerning the hours of operation. Has that been addressed prior to tonight's meeting, or is that going to be a condition?
It's a condition of the... It's a condition of the conditional use. It's number four on the...
Oh, okay. I didn't see the word hours. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I'd like to make a couple of comments. I was not really in favor of this project, thinking this was permanent. I didn't realize, somehow I missed the word temporary. Since this is a temporary, and it is limited to two years, I think that it is, as much as there is no perfect place, this is as perfect a place as you're going to be able to find. And seeing that it will be gone by the time the DeWitt project will be starting to build or is built, then I think that I, I find no reason to not, not accept this plan. So at this time, if there are no more questions from the board, I...
One comment.
Certainly.
Sorry.
Okay. Go ahead.
So occasionally, in my day job, I have to put in an application and come stand before City Council and fill out how I am going to, if I'm going to close a street for a day for an event. I have to have a written plan for how I'm going to contact all of the business owners to share with them in advance what I'm going to do, hear their concerns, and be sure that I address them. And I come before this body, I don't, at least two or three times a year to make that. And as you think about the constituencies that are impacted, both positively and potentially negatively from this proposal, I'd encourage you to think of the business community who does provide the financial support to some of the nonprofit partners in the room, who provide the tax-paying support that hopefully will, will be able at some point to provide some long-term housing solutions and services for our community, that they're an equal stakeholder to the residents that are in your nearby area, and that, as you've already made the commitment, as you go through the operation of this temporary shelter, that you're sensitive to the needs of the business corridor, and that I hope that the business owners in this community, along with the unhoused families, will be able to support you in your accelerated timeline towards a long-term solution. Yes? Yes. Ms. Kittredge?
Thank you. I just want to first thank everybody that came out to both listen to this discussion and to participate in it. I know it's valuable time and also not always comfortable to speak publicly. And I'll also echo Board Member Smith's thanks to all of the folks who helped with the warming shelter in the past. I also just wanted to echo Board Member Najin's comment around the overlay district for homeless shelters. I personally, I guess I'll just state my own personal feelings, is that I would love to revisit that in the future, to remove it, to remove the barrier of finding a permanent location for these services. And I just wanted to make that clear for these very important services that our cities in dire need of. And I wanted to thank those again who spoke to that need.
Thank you.
Okay. If we have all the questions and comments, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, but I have a technical question for Shelley before I begin. Shelley, we've listed five, and I'm going to add a sixth condition to the motions tonight. Do they need to be repeated for each of the two motions?
Now, the first four are for the conditional, and the fifth, possibly sixth, is for the...
The development.
The zoning, the development criteria.
Great. Thanks. Shelley?
Absolutely. Let's, let's go.
I'd like to make a motion that the application submitted by Lewiston Housing Authority for a temporary homeless shelter at 104 Park Street meets all of the necessary standards for a conditional use permit contained in the zoning and land use code in Article 10, Section 3, and standards for conditional use permits, and that approval be granted with the following conditions: that the use of a temporary homeless shelter has a maximum of one year to commence from the date of issue of the conditional use permit; that this approval is for temporary homeless shelter not to exceed 37 beds for a two-year period starting at the issuance of a certificate of occupancy; and that a new conditional use permit will be required for conditional use of a homeless shelter at this location after that period; that prior to commencing operations, a homeless shelter license is required from the City Council; and that the application be amended to include hours of operation prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dupree? Any further discussion? In that case, I'll call the roll. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Michael Markot?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson?
Yes.
I'd like to make another motion.
Yes.
That the application submitted by Lewiston Housing Authority for a temporary homeless shelter at 104 Park Street meets all of the necessary criteria contained in the zoning and land use code, including but not limited to Article 13, Section 4 approval criteria, and that approval be granted with the following conditions: that the Site Plan C 1.1 be amended to show approximate location of exterior lighting, and to note that any lighting will be fully cut off or downcast at a maximum of 25 feet high prior to the issuance of a building permit; that the right title and interest of 40 Pine Street is furnished to the city for the issuance of a building permit; and that before the issuance of an occupancy permit, that the city has the opportunity to review, in accordance to tonight's Site Plan C 1.1, the outdoor area as noted on the plans, and that it is a fully fenced area of equal size to the Site Plan presented tonight.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roger? Any further discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Michael Markot?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can the board, for the record, because we've heard three board members request it tonight, can we ensure that the record of tonight's minutes requests a revisiting of the conversation of the limits of the shelter overlay district? Is the request made when it was originally approved as well?
Is that my vote?
I'm just asking for a record. Is there a motion you can make, sir?
A record that a member asked, not the sentiment to the full board.
Correct. Okay. All right, in...
Can we have a recess?
Yes, okay. Let's take a five-minute recess, please.
There's a reason there's a cushion on your chair.
Mine's hurting.
I was thinking about it, thinking, I was like, I need to push it up.
I know. Well, there's always one under...
My auntie's chair. It's usually sitting on, you know, put on the ground, so.
Flask. I would like it.
Who do I sit with? Like, who's my counselor mate? Oh, it is, isn't it? I feel like we could be good for a Snifter whiskey down there, right? Yeah. Thought about it significantly. Why can't I get? I went to our public server, and I'm trying to, I was trying to look at the comp plan, and it just keeps saying, like, it can't identify. Yeah. But it won't give me the page to accept the damage.
Congrats. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting back to order, please. And if you want to have further discussions, please move your discussions out into the hallway. I don't want to be impolite, but... Okay. So the next agenda on our public hearings is a planning board recommendation to the city council on amendments to the zoning and land use code, including Article Two definitions, Article Three official zoning map, Article Nine district regulations, Article Twelve performance standards, and Article Thirteen development review and standards. The proposed amendments shall expand and restructure home occupation requirements, rename, add uses, and increase the density for residential uses in the office residential zoning district, add a neighborhood restaurant use to the neighborhood conservation B-zone, amend the erosion control standards and rezone fifty-five Old Lisbon Road, a seventy-acre park parcel owned by the city of Lewiston, to facilitate the future sale of the property to create new housing and mixed-use opportunities. And we're going to be taking these items separately, and I will open it up separately to the public to speak. You can speak three minutes on each topic. You're not going to be limited to one topic. And Ms. Norton, so we're going to basically combine Article Three and Article Nine, eleven?
Yes.
So because of the change in the naming of the office residential?
Yeah, so the suggestion from staff, so what you've historically done is taken each article separately, discussed it, held a public hearing, and then voted on it. What we're suggesting you do tonight is for Article Three and Article Eleven, which both have to do with the office residential zoning district, that you would discuss the changes we're proposing in Article Three, which is the map change for fifty-five Old Lisbon Road, that you would discuss the changes to the office residential zone in Article Eleven and other, you know, changes proposed in Article Eleven. And then you would kind of go back and open your public hearing for Article Three and vote on that. Because there are some, it's a little bit iterative, and I think it would be more expedient than complete, feeling like you've completed your discussion and thought process on fifty-five Old Lisbon Road rezoning, and then realizing when you get to Article Eleven that maybe those things will change your thoughts on it.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Tebow, you're on.
Let's jump right into it.
Absolutely.
So, the first changes are in Article Two definitions. Let's start with revising the definition for farm housing to clarify the types of housing that may be used. This change is also proposed in Article Eleven for consistency. So, I'll just do it one at a time. We've specified that farm housing can only consist of single-family dwellings, mobile homes, and tiny homes. That wasn't specified before. There are some, you know, uncertainties that we just wanted to clarify. The next change is we moved the criteria for home occupations to Article Twelve, performance standards. And again, if you look at the definitions, you'll see a large chunk of the home occupations have been crossed out. We've just taken that language, we've moved it to Article Twelve, and we've also revised that language, which will be discussed in the Article Twelve changes. The next change, C, we added a definition for neighborhood restaurants. This is proposed to be added to the land use table in Article Eleven. And our thoughts here, neighborhood restaurant, it's similar to the definition of a restaurant. We've just put a size restriction on it, meant to be more of a smaller footprint, transition, no use between strictly commercial, strictly residential. That can be used in the former or proposed former OR district and the NCB zones. And lastly, we've changed neighborhood stores to neighborhood retail store. Very simple change, just changed the title to be consistent with Article Eleven. And we can look at that further in Article Eleven.
Okay. In that case, Ms. Cox, you have some questions for staff?
Just a couple, I'll try to keep them quick. The farm housing one, it seems like the part that you're adding is being specific about the type of housing that can be added. And so, this would allow potentially for an unlimited number of single-family dwellings or mobile homes, should all of the residents have an active working relationship with the farm. Is that correct?
That's what it seems to be understanding. Before taking, using that same logic, it could have also meant multifamily housing.
I'm wondering why, as an agricultural business owner, the best way for them to provide housing for their labor force is being restricted for the city when we're already focused on the working relationship to the farm? So the intention was to exclude multifamilies?
So I just want to clarify that right now multifamily is not allowed in the rural agricultural zone, which is where this use is allowed, the use of agriculture. Really, the clarification here is when we go to the use chart, we have a note number eight that is, the way it's written is very unclear to the new staff. Existing staff knows how they've interpreted it, but when you read it, it doesn't provide a lot of clarity as to what's allowed. I can pull that actual language, we'll just get to that part if it were necessary for the delay here.
Which charts it on, one of the ones we've been provided on, assuming?
The land use or the space in both?
The land.
Land use, okay.
So, part of the...
Oh, yeah, the note, oh, sorry. So right now, the note says farm housing on the premise of an agricultural operation. And it was unclear to staff what that meant. So we've changed it to say farm housing is allowed on the premise of an agricultural operation and may consist of single-family dwellings, mobile homes, and tiny homes. So, it just was too terse, it just didn't have enough for it to be clear for staff that that note eight meant that. So that's the change in Article Eleven. And then based on that, we wanted to amend the definitions so that they married up. So that's the proposal that we're making for that fix. Obviously, if the planning board has a different fix that you'd like to provide to give more clarity, we're open to that conversation.
Okay. Does that satisfy your explanation?
Not entirely, no, but I'm trying not to belabor a point on the long night. I mean, realistically, maybe the language of "may", I just, it's hard to get work and workers, and it's particularly hard for workers, particularly agricultural workers because of a lack of affordable housing. And if I was going to put up some housing for my workers, you've told me I can use all of the ways that are the most expensive, and that I do not have an economical way like a four-square or a duplex to put onto my property.
Yeah, and that's how the code is currently written.
So we'd need to change the code?
Our code, by your footnote.
Well, when you look at the use chart and you look at allowed uses, single-family says it's permitted with this note eight that says it can be used for farm housing. Mobile home says the same thing, and none of the other uses say that. And we've added tiny homes. So that's how it's currently put together.
So we would have to change the zone?
And then we'd have to come back and change the definition. So I'm just wondering if the way in which we update this language allows us to not be in a little circular hell, but to just get us to, yes, you're allowed to house your workers, but they must have a working relationship with the agricultural primary purpose of the farm. That's like the point that you're making here.
Right.
And I'm all for not putting a multifamily on a farm, having one person in one of the six units work on the farm and be like, "I'm good. I get what you're trying to do. I just think this doesn't necessarily get you there or give the flexibility to the property owner, and there is language you could put in this definition that makes us not have to revisit it, should you choose to update the land use chart."
It also, the only clarification that it provides beyond the use chart is that tiny homes fall into that category. And so, I would advocate for putting tiny homes in as a use rather than having it be in sort of this funny footnote area. And as Member Cox is saying, just leave it as like farm housing is allowed on the premises of an agricultural operation when accessory, or, you know, when...
Because the language about the dwelling units having active farm, remember, like each dwelling unit must have to have somebody that's working on the farm. That's what the language is here. Is that new language?
No.
Is that part of what you've clarified?
It's just what it's underlined, that's the new language, correct? Normally, that's the way it's...
I'm just not sure you've done the thing you set out to do, that's all. Happy to talk about it again when we look at a land use chart two years from now.
Josh?
I would just throw out that if we change that to, and it may consist of all permitted housing types, for instance, within the zone. So that way, if we do change what's permitted there, then that will allow for us to allow multifamily units, for instance. I think specifically and particularly when I think about like H2 visas, like if there was a large operation here, the housing is actually required. And so, you know, it's...
Right, and then they usually use like trailers and things like that.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. Yes, Mr. Martin?
Quick question, why does the footnote exist? Like, if it's already spelled out in the table that housing is permitted, then why do we have to have a footnote that says, "by the way", where it says housing's permitted, housing is in fact permitted? It seems somewhat redundant, the information that's already in the table. So again, back to, you know, how can we, how could we maybe condense this and make it so it's a little more future-friendly?
You were only, historically, you were only allowed to have one residential use on a property. So if you had a farmhouse and a farm out there, and you wanted to have any additional housing, you wouldn't be allowed to do it. So at some point, the city adopted this farm housing language to say, "Hey, if you want to put a bunch of single-family homes on your property, have at it as long as they're tied to the agricultural use out there." What staff's attempted to do here is, as Shelley noted, it's only those uses that are allowed out there. So even tiny homes, it's not, we're actually trying to clarify that there because you folks in the council approved some language recently with respect to tiny homes to actually pull out what that is, that they are a dwelling, they can be accessory if they are ADUs. We put that language in there about tiny homes being accessory. So the thought here is this is kind of belt and suspenders to make sure that people know that a single-family home can be a mobile home, can be a tiny home, and can be farm housing as well. So, to Shannon's part, point, yeah, we're not addressing the larger housing question if somebody wants to do a multi there. That's, I mean, you folks can certainly, you can either move on how it's proposed, you can ask us to change it and do something differently there. But we're not really changing anything here other than clarifying what was already allowed to begin with.
I also want to clarify with tiny homes, so far, the city hasn't chosen to add that as a use on the chart because state law has required that anywhere you can do a single-family home, you can do a tiny home. So that's already addressed by state law. We haven't taken that action to add it to the chart and essentially mirror whatever single-family is or have it on the same line be single-family, comma, tiny home, we could do that.
By that same line of thinking, though, the work that we've done to include and update definitions around single-family homes and ADUs does what you're doing here and adds a second place of restrictive use in the future, should you want to add, change your land use chart.
Yeah, certainly, the suggestion of putting all permitted uses...
Can we make that amendment?
I think that might be, you know, instead of being specific and itemizing the items, then if we just put as per, all permitted uses.
Any farm housing shall be located on the same parcel as the agricultural use in alignment with permitted uses.
Yep. Okay.
What did you say, Shannon?
I'm not reading what you're reading, where are you reading that, Shannon?
Under definitions, farm housing?
Some of what I just said wasn't written, I was suggesting new language.
This is where, what she's talking about.
I'm in the use table, sorry, you're in definitions.
Yeah, she's in definitions on the staff comment.
Are my colleagues...
It's in the appendix A, the one that starts with appendix A.
And may consist of all permitted uses, okay, thank you.
Okay, does that sound, that sounds good for everybody?
May or shall, sorry, but I didn't love your "may" in the first place. Shall, shall consist of all permitted uses? Or be in alignment with, which is my language.
Yeah, yep, shall.
Your "may" is ambiguous.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, the next one is the home occupations. I don't see a problem, I'm just...
Oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We're just gonna, I'm just going to be?
Doing great.
Move the criteria for home occupations, I mean, it just clarifies, it puts it in the right place where it belongs. Neighborhood restaurants, does anybody have, oh, Mr. Najin?
I just had a quick question about, so it says fifteen hundred square feet total of floor space. Are you referring to seating space, not kitchen?
Everything.
That's everything combined?
That's everything.
So, structure space, first-floor structure footprint?
Yep.
I think within restaurants and public places, the floor space might be confused.
Yeah, floor space might indicate, you know, seems to indicate that that would be, you know, where the customers are.
It's the building footprint, you should say that.
Yeah.
Well, it wouldn't really be the footprint. If it's a two-story building, it would be limited to fifteen square feet, like total area.
Okay, then say total, total area, not total floor space.
Permitted use, or? Like their license would be for the use of a restaurant, and so everything under that license would be included in the space?
Yeah, so if your seating was upstairs and your kitchen and your ordering area was downstairs, it would be fifteen hundred square feet maximum. If you had an apartment upstairs, it would just be the first-floor restaurant, that would be fifteen hundred.
How big's this room? Anybody, anybody at all?
I mean, a lot smaller than fifteen hundred square feet, but I don't know.
No.
No, this is bigger than fifteen hundred.
This way we're having the conversation.
This is bigger than fifteen hundred square feet.
And so when you think about neighborhood restaurants, like, I guess I'm just trying to, this is like a takeout counter with four tables, and this isn't à la Fuel, because Fuel was eighteen hundred square feet.
So the example I was, I'm glad Shelley and Craig reminded me, the one I, example I used was Jamie K's. What was Jamie K's on Scribner Boulevard? That was what, thirteen hundred or something?
Twelve or thirteen hundred square feet.
So if anybody's familiar with that, and that, you know, it used to be Jamie K's, Boba was in there for a minute, and then they moved downtown. So that was, and we kind of based it upon that because that is an NCA zoning district there. It sort of fits because it's been there forever, and it was a neighborhood retail store as well that wanted to become a restaurant. And we limited their seating to twelve at the time because we don't allow restaurants there, but we said some seating accessory to like a convenience store and a sandwich shop would be okay, but not a full-fledged restaurant. So, if people are familiar with that, and that's that, that's the entire building of that space.
Yeah, Mr. Najin? More than three times the area for retail, go ahead.
Well, I'm just thinking about like, okay, so I agree one hundred percent, like that model you're talking about, so like, I think it's Vittles and Variety now?
Yeah, exactly.
But, when you're talking about fifteen hundred square feet, like, so you have commissary kitchens, right? Which don't take up very much room at all. And then you have larger kitchens that, you know, for instance, fine dining, you need different equipment. Even like a coffee shop that serves, you know, special coffees would need more space than, let's say, you know, like a burrito shop. And so, I'm just thinking about like, why didn't we attach, as opposed to saying fifteen hundred square feet overall, why didn't we attach like a maximum capacity, like guideline for sit-down?
Like for seating?
Yeah.
I mean, you wouldn't have to have seating, like, I mean, it could be a takeout restaurant.
If you did have seating, right, and it was like, based on the fire codes, how many, how many, like, let's say you were using fourteen hundred square feet, how many seats is that?
It depends on their floor area and how the kitchen's laid out.
No, but I'm just saying, like, if fourteen hundred square feet was seatable, or let's say twelve hundred square feet, how many, how many seats is that? What I'm trying to figure out is, because I don't know the math exactly, but like, are we saying absolutely, like, there's a way to have like fifty people in a neighborhood restaurant, like for a sit-down meal?
It's going to depend on how they design it. Is it booths, is it tables, is it bar stools, you know?
May I ask a follow-up?
Yeah.
I think maybe another way to ask, potentially, what Member Najin is asking is, did we pick fifteen hundred square feet because we could not have a restaurant that seats forty people? Sure, there could be no seating, could be takeout only, could be twelve seats in the front, but for example, if it was a five thousand square foot space, as we are feeling amenable towards a retail space, then we could surely fit a hundred and thirty people. And perhaps the idea of a hundred and thirty people sitting and dining for an hour in a neighborhood makes us queasy. So did we pick a square foot number based on the amount of people we want to limit it to serve? Kitchens are expensive, restaurants are hard, and neighborhoods need places to actually gather and not just get takeout. And for us to be so generous with square footage towards a retail space, which is a lot of traffic and quick and go and not experience-oriented, whereas a neighborhood restaurant is, I think that we've got these inverted, candidly.
So one of the conversations staff had was around one of the primary, well, the primary noise or nuisance factors to a neighborhood, to having a business in them, and so is traffic and parking and that sort of thing. So unlike a retail store or convenience store where people come and go frequently, you're going to have a lot more parking need for a restaurant potentially if people are sitting for a long time. So, we did feel that a smaller size for that made more sense than for a retail store that's going to want more space for product, but would potentially have less people at a given time at the location. So, also, the discussion with staff was if we allow a neighborhood retail store in some of these essentially residential-only areas like, or I guess they're more transitional, NCB and OR, where they allow a few commercial uses, that we thought it would be beneficial to also allow a restaurant, but we felt like it was important to have that limitation. Otherwise, it could become a real nuisance for the nearby neighbors. So, that was it, there was no real magic to the fifteen hundred square feet. We did look at a few different facilities and thought about those smaller restaurants that we were aware of and looked at their sizes.
Whole offer, since the question was asked about seating, Sondra and Dram folks have been in there. So they're limited to forty-nine or can't exceed fifty because of fire code issues, and their square footage is around twenty-one hundred.
Yes, Ms. Smith?
I'm just going to agree that fifteen hundred is too small. I think we should definitely increase it. I think about the space where I know exactly the square footage, which used to be Val's Florist Shop. That is fifteen hundred square feet in the main area. And if you wanted to use the bump out, it's another five hundred. So I would bump it up or do a seating capacity instead.
That's a different zoning district, though, as well.
Right, just looking at size, you know, just for comparison, and thank you for the twenty-one hundred on Sondra and Dram.
Right. You know, maybe what we need to do is, you know, if we want to do, limit fifteen hundred square feet, but fifteen hundred square feet for the public, not including the kitchen, then that would, I think that would make more sense.
Huge pain in the butt to assess and enforce for code, though. And maybe that's why we got here.
Well, but I'm just saying that that's probably, I mean, I know, I worked for a supermarket chain years ago that they were limited to five thousand square feet to be open on Sundays. So they would go along and measure all of the nooks and crannies that they could assess to the back room, and so that they would have just five thousand square feet of people's space. And so, yeah, I understand that, but...
I do think from a regulation standpoint, going with our square footage as opposed to a mix and match, like a total square footage, I think would be the easiest thing for us to administer.
I'd love to see it, say, twenty-five hundred, then. Realistically, with the two examples that we've been given here today, and if we're, as our comprehensive plan, which is dictated to guide us in our work, is looking for neighborhoods, particularly residential neighborhoods, that are more walkable and more neighborhood-oriented, everything you described about a nuisance assumes everybody is driving there. And I think the whole point of a neighborhood restaurant definition is an indication that we are hoping they don't.
Okay, Mr. Najin?
The, two things I just want to say real quick. One, thank you so much even for trying this, this is great, I think this is important. But two, another thought that I had, which I don't know if this is addressed in this proposal, but outdoor seating space, right, like cafe space? Because in some of these, like in certain neighborhoods, NCB neighborhoods that are adjacent to downtown, there's plenty of open and vacant space in which, like a neighborhood cafe could work with, with an undeveloped lot, but, you know, I think that, how does that work into it? Is that seating, you know? And also, grabbing going, you have a couple of benches somewhere, is that also seating?
Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I was looking at the agenda item. Multi-layered, I mean, this is a piece of the discussion I think we'll have in a little bit about OR. And then there's a discussion about making a certain parcel, I think it's a single parcel, seventy acres, into OR. And I envisioned when I saw this, although fifteen hundred is not something I can perceive. If it's at five thousand, I couldn't perceive the size in my head graphically, but I think, and I'm hoping that staff's approach here was to minimize the size so that it was something that the neighborhood would use, that it wouldn't be something that people from outside the neighborhood come in and frequent. The larger the seating space, et cetera, the more cumbersome it'll be. It will destroy the nature of the neighborhood. So I'm concerned with increasing that too much, although I'd like to have a better perception of fifteen hundred or eighteen hundred or twenty-one hundred. Same thing with the next item. Same thing with the next item, the retail being five thousand. Being able to perceive that. And when we get to the OR discussion, which I didn't think that I'd be talking about until we got there, but when we make these changes, we're changing it community-wide. If we're saying that OR is now neighborhood business and we're redefining what neighborhood business is, that has a lot of impact across the community. I, I thought that this particular item with its varied layers should have been over several meetings and taking incrementally, but throwing it into the rezoning of fifty-five Old Lisbon Road just seemed a little too serene.
I, I just want to jump in, and if we could focus on the definitions and get through that.
But we need to be careful because if we, and I would hope that we would have motions and agreement or disagreement each step of the way, but each step actually plugs into the next. So we need to be careful which similar puzzle pieces that we're putting where in the puzzle, because we could get to a point further out that we don't want to be. It sounded good at the first level, but by the time you get to the third or fourth, it doesn't make sense anymore.
I, I guess what I want to say is that I would treat the office residential where it is right now. I would think about whether it makes sense to you that there would be a neighborhood restaurant there. Neighborhood retail, the only change we're making is in the wording so that it matches the use chart. When you get to fifty-five Old Lisbon Road, I think that's a separate discussion as to whether the OR is an appropriate zone for that. And it may be that the board determines that it's not because it is, maybe it's not similar to other places that are zoned OR. I don't know, but I don't want us to get kind of stuck in a vortex where we're going from article to article to figure out what's affecting what here.
But one layer of this large agenda item, isn't it eliminating OR in favor of NB?
So when we get to Article eleven, we're talking about renaming the OR. But for the Article two definitions, I, I really don't think that those relate the way you're suggesting that they do in that the fifty-five Old Lisbon Road could be rezoned OR, that might be the zone that makes the most sense.
But OR is being eliminated, correct?
It's being renamed, not eliminated.
It's just getting a, it's just a name change.
It's a facelift.
Yeah, no, no, no.
This column stays, it does get just a new name.
But, but, but we're going to incorporate some of these definitions along the way into OR and then rename it NB, so NB is actually incorporated.
This, this one definition, neighborhood restaurant, that we're proposing adding this new use, we have also proposed adding it to two zones only on the use chart, which is NCB and then the OR zone.
Which later in the process you want to rename to NB?
Yes, and I guess I just want to point out that the, the work that staff has done and brought to you tonight is really based on discussions last summer that we had about the OR with Joint Council and Planning Board, adding uses to it, looking at its density, looking at whether that use, given the areas where it's located, should be a little bit more commercial than it was. A separate process here was the Economic Development Staff and Council looking at fifty-five Old Lisbon Road, looking at wanting to have housing developed there, and looking at the fact that it's got three different zoning districts on it, and that's going to be something that a developer is going to come forward and want to change. It makes sense for the, the city to change it to something consistent as we're working it. OR was selected because we felt, looking at the zoning chart, that that gave a number, flexibility in the type of housing styles that would be allowed. But, you know, this is really a separate process, so if it's determined that these changes to OR make sense globally, but then OR doesn't make sense for that parcel, that's an okay place for the board to land. So I'll let you continue discussing that.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Pine.
Yeah, switching, switching gears a little bit, so hearing some of my other planning board members, it sounds like we should reconsider the square footage for restaurant, but also hearing some of the comments from staff about concerns around traffic and parking and things like that, you know, that, you, you could have a huge kitchen and only have one table, and you're not going to have too much traffic and parking, right? And so I, I would propose that we look at raising the square footage allowed, but then also putting a seating cap in there as well. Does that address like takeout business, you know, if you have a bigger kitchen, you can do more takeout business? Yeah, maybe it does, but like, that's really hard to, that's really hard to control. So that would be my proposal, that we revisit this and modify it, and, and that we ask staff to maybe come back with something.
So maybe we put a hold on this one and, and revisit it?
Yeah.
Okay. So we put a hold on, on the, I would also like to put a hold on, on the retail store. I think five thousand square foot in a neighborhood A, NCA, would be a bit on the large size.
I don't believe that that's where it's allowed.
Okay.
Uh, let's look at the chart for a minute here.
It's not allowed there.
It'd be B, B and, and OR. So that's it. Conditional and downtown and institutional office.
And that's been, and that's been that way for quite a while.
Right, okay.
The yards, I think, would probably be like, almost that's the businesses, right?
So that's Nick. What's five thousand feet look like, David?
That's most of your lots downtown, most lots downtown are fifty by a hundred.
Right.
So if somebody, Ward's Market wants to build a new store, they'd be limited to five thousand square feet.
Right.
And my guess is Ward's Market is probably larger than five thousand square feet.
I would suspect they are, yes.
Yep, there.
Yeah. So, so what is the, the feeling of the board, shall we postpone both of those and, and revisit next time with a little bit more information?
Lucy, if I can, just for thought, too, postponing or not, you guys can think or sleep on it. Just other, other comparisons, right, so I gave you twenty-one hundred for Sondra and Dram. Simonus's is only one thousand thirty-five square feet. So that's smaller than anything we're talking about here. The new Dunkin', your folks approved on Main Street at four-twenty Main Street, that's twenty-three hundred square feet. Used to be Gillies Variety on twenty-four Spring Street, maybe you know where that is, Josh?
Mm-hmm.
That one's twelve hundred square feet. And then Angelo's Pizza, which is down by the Dairy Joy, that's twenty-two hundred square feet.
Yeah, so Angelo's is my neighborhood pizza joint, my son works there, it's small. They've got like four parking spots, ninety percent of their traffic are people walking in the neighborhood, or they're Yeah, or they're in and out. And I'm just, I, I don't, I do not want to revisit this, though I'm happy to, should that be the wish of the board and staff. I'd really just like to see it, say, twenty-five hundred feet, I'm fine with the retail, too, and I'd love to move on both. And I don't, I don't know that we need a seating limit, I.
I would, I would actually, I would support that, I would second that modification if, if you're proposing.
I am proposing an amendment. Is that how we're going to do this? Because we'll do it.
Well, we have to open it up to, to the public first, but, but, yes, Amy.
Just one other amendment to Josh's point about outdoor seating, can we have it, say, interior space? Right, for the restaurant, twenty-five hundred inside?
Yeah.
Yep.
So that we leave ourselves.
I think that's probably a good idea because it's silent to that right now, but understand, so someone does a neighborhood retail, they do twenty-five hundred square feet, and then they have outdoor seating with it, we wouldn't, that would be allowed, we wouldn't, there wouldn't be a cap on that necessarily. I'm not saying that's a good or bad thing, just, that's.
It's vibrant.
Okay.
It's vibrant.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other questions or comments? I'm going to open it up to the public. If anyone wishes to speak regarding these things, the farm housing, criteria for home occupations, definition of neighborhood restaurant, or neighborhood retail store. Anybody wants to speak on, on that, please go, and you have three minutes, sir, identify yourself with your name and address, please.
Roger Roy at seventy-two Old Lisbon Road. I just want to make a couple of comments, I have no affiliation whatsoever with this, but just for your info, the old Blanchette Store, which is now Webster Street Variety, where he incorporated bottle drop-offs and stuff like that, you're talking a big building that, they're probably looking at three to four thousand square feet altogether. But he has a restaurant there, but the restaurant is not part of the back facility, so what do you do with a place like that?
Well, that's where we, they designate a certain area that is restaurant.
But if, no, you were talking, they were talking about a total footprint. Well, the total footprint of that building is.
Right, right, yeah, that's why we're not, we don't think that a footprint would be the good, the good way, we need to have.
I'm sure they would be grandfathered anyway, but.
Right, right.
That's why I offered covered by the business license, because I don't know that the entire.
Are we talking about the fifty-five Old Lisbon Road yet, or is that another issue?
Not yet, not yet.
But we appreciate the patience of so many in the crowd.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Okay, so we're saying that we're going to limit fifteen to twenty-five hundred square feet of indoor floor space. Not, not.
Footprint or anything.
Not footprint or anything, it's just floor space that is designated to be the restaurant. Okay.
The entire perimeter of the building?
Not, no, that's the footprint of the building, this is the floor space of the restaurant use.
Twenty-five hundred for.
Well, it's the restaurant, the kitchen, the, everything.
So that's the entire perimeter of the building?
Well, not necessarily.
That's been attached for redemption.
Not, not necessarily, it can be a section of the building.
Storage is in the back, you know, it's just a restaurant.
So now we're talking about bigger and bigger.
If you. No, we were just discussing that, and, and the majority of people seem to think that twenty-five hundred floor space for the restaurant, including kitchen and accessory.
Staff was at fifteen hundred, and I don't want to nearly double it at twenty-five hundred.
Can we, is the public comment period closed?
Uh, yes, I'll close it to the public if no one else has any questions.
Can we up-down vote it?
Yep. I'll entertain a motion, too. And we can identify each of these items, or we can group a couple of them. Okay, let's bundle them. All right, I'm entertaining a motion regarding the definitions for Article two, definition, section two.
I'd love to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion pursuant to Article seven, section four, and Article seventeen, section five of the Zoning and Land Use Code to send a favorable recommendation to City Council for amendments to Appendix A, Zoning and Land Use Code for Article two definitions as amended tonight.
Do I have a second?
Does that cover you?
Amended tonight, so we're going to twenty-five hundred?
We are going to twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five and specifying inside.
Indoor.
Indoor, whatever word you want to say that it's inside.
Yeah, and you.
Twenty-five hundred square feet of total indoor floor space, and then for farm housing, we have, it shall consist of all permitted uses.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Correct, okay, and Mr. Nagin has seconded, do we have any further comments on the board? Okay, if not, I will call the roll, Roger Dupree.
Yes.
Joshua Nagin.
Yes.
Michael Markov. Shannon Cox.
Yes.
Christine Kittredge.
Yes.
Amy Smith.
Yes.
Lucy Bisson, yes. All right, we move on to Article three. And Article.
Do we need to do eleven and then three, was there a sequence?
Okay, let's do eleven and then three, would that work better? That way we're changing the name and then we're going to talk about fifty-five.
You absolutely can do that.
Okay, so let's do that. All right, so Article eleven, we have district regulations. So do you want to discuss those, Craig, please?
So, again, jumping right in, we've revised the office residential district statement of purpose and renamed it to neighborhood business. Some of the crossouts and some of the new language that we've used is taken from the Legacy Listen Comprehensive Plan. We looked at the map, figured out which, which zone as far as, I'm sorry, growth area. We found the growth area that that, you know, the, the OR is in or is consistent with, and use some of that language to just make that more consistent with the new neighborhood business name. Moving to B, section twenty-two, land use requirements, land use table. We revised the land use matrix to add new use for neighborhood restaurants, permitting it in the NCB and the OR district or the neighborhood business district. We are permitting neighborhood retail stores in the OR or NB district, and removing note eight from residential uses, so I don't know if that was, that needs to be changed or not.
Same pesky note eight?
That pesky note eight. Yeah, I think we'll have to use it as a back just to make that consistent with changes we did from just recently.
So what, yeah, I think what we had done with that note eight was, under natural resources, agriculture, there isn't, the note eight is there, so we felt like that took care of it, and it didn't need to be located in the specific housing types.
So that, that then will remain, we'll remove it from the residential uses, keep it in the agricultural uses, and it will specify the note, you know, the changes that we amended. Moving to section C, or C, section twenty-three, space and bulk requirements, space and bulk table. These are the changes to the, the OR zone, the OR district or the NB district. We've reduced the minimum net lot area per dwelling unit with public sewer from, and I'll direct you to the space and bulk chart, from three thousand square feet per dwelling unit to two thousand square feet per dwelling unit. With sewer. And the minimum lot size, again, with public sewer, for multifamily dwellings, we reduced that to, well, from twenty thousand square feet total lot size to twelve thousand five hundred square feet total lot size. So those are the major changes, those pertaining to the OR zone. Have you answered a question?
Okay, anyone have any questions? I think we might like to read the statement of purpose
Certainly.
for the new neighborhood business district, so that the people who are here who don't have this in front of them will know what we're, what we're doing.
So the neighborhood business district statement of purpose. The purpose of the neighborhood business district is to provide for the orderly transition of residential areas and underutilized parcels along major traffic arteries to low-intensity, non-residential, mixed-use and multifamily housing, while protecting adjoining residential neighborhoods from undesirable impacts. The reuse of existing land and buildings to better promote more walkable and bikeable corridors is desirable due to the presence of surrounding infrastructure. The conversion of existing properties from residential to non-residential and mixed-use should occur in a manner which increases density where appropriate, preserves the architectural character of the neighborhood, provides controlled traffic access, maintains adequate parking standards, and retains a higher percentage of open space compared to more commercial districts.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do I have any questions on the three items in Article eleven? Mr. Markov.
So does that mean we're changing OR to neighborhood business in this Article eleven?
Yes. A, in, in section A, that's, that's that one. And it, these, that's the description that he just read.
I, I haven't paid very close attention to the description, and I'm concerned with, it seems, to make one statement of purpose, and that could very potentially end up in another direction. And. And could you just repeat the green space again?
And retains a higher percentage of open space compared to more commercial districts.
What's that, what that's referring to is the maximum impervious coverage. When you look at the chart in the office residential or neighborhood business zoning district, it's sixty percent maximum allowed impervious coverage. When you look at NCB, it's eighty-five percent. Downtown residential is eighty-five percent. Institutional office is seventy-five percent. Community business is seventy-five percent. High neighborhood is seventy-five percent.
Maximum impervious?
Yeah, so it's sixty percent.
And Shelley, that's unchanged in today's proposed amendments?
That is unchanged, yes. So that's part of why that was kind of listed that way in the, um, in the Statement of Purpose. And so really the intent here when we looked at, you know, you're trying to have a, a transition. So the, this neighborhood business zone is intended to be transitional between just residential and a mix of, you know, more heavily commercial, right? When we think about the locations where this is located, like on Main Street, you know, just a little bit, just east, west, sorry.
Oh, I don't know those.
Of Strawberry Avenue.
Just this side of, of-
This side of the highway or an overhead toward Strawberry Avenue. Like you think about that area that you just had the conversation about rezoning, those parcels, the home health hospice and those larger parcels. You know, the, the areas that we're looking at are ones that are in that kind of transitional space. So they're more intense potentially than an NCA residential zoning district, but they're less intense than downtown residential, let's say. So that's kind of where we're-
My initial question, so both our OR and NB has the same amount of maximum coverage at seventy-five percent?
Sixty percent.
Fifty percent.
Sixty.
Sixty percent, yes.
Fifty.
Six, zero.
Six, zero?
Six, zero. Okay.
Sixty, where did I hear seventy-five then?
Uh, some of the other uses that I listed, institutional office is seventy-five, community business is seventy-five.
Oh, okay. So it's sixty is the maximum?
Right.
In either OR or NB?
Right.
Okay.
It's just a name change.
No, it isn't.
Well, there's some other, there's some other-
These are outlined in the, so the only changes to permitted use, which is the B and C of it, are listed here and then in here. The only ones, because impervious and all those other items, is just the density allowed in those two. And the name change, which is the top.
Obviously, that's part of the change, density.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, in that case, I'll open it up to the public. Does anyone have any questions? This is still not fifty-five. So on this, the changing of the name and some of the criteria for the OR to NB and the section twenty-two land use requirements on the land use table and section twenty-three space and bulk requirements.
And there's one little note, the note eight, we have the repeat of the changes to the farm housing language that mirrors your definition change.
Okay, yes, that's true, okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments in regards to this? Okay, in that case, I'll close it to the public and I'll bring it back to the board. And I'll entertain a motion for section, for Article eleven, district regulations.
I'd like to make a motion pursuant to Article seven, section four, and Article seventeen, section five of the Zoning and Land Use Code to send a favorable recommendation to the City Council for amendments to Appendix A, Zoning and Land Use Code for Article three? No.
Wait, we didn't discuss Article three.
Oh, sorry, Article, thank you, Article eleven. Noting a reflection of consistency in language is the approved definition for farm housing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Nagin, do we have any further discussion?
Question, I just heard farm housing. Where'd that come into the?
Well, she just mentioned it.
It's right in, so this is the one for this one. And they're just repeating it because it's a note in the land use table. And we're just saying that the language that is in the note eight needs to be consistent with that, which just was applied.
Both sections.
Right. Okay. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Now, Joshua Nagin?
Yes.
Michael Markott?
No.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bissin, yes. Okay, now we're gonna go back to number three. Okay, so the official map, the zoning map. Craig, can you read the, your, your comments on that one?
Certainly. So fifty-five Old Lisbon Road. This is a seventy-acre parcel. Is that right? Yeah. Owned, currently owned by the City of Lewiston. That is looking to rezone it. It is split-zoned right now from office residential, urban enterprise and low-density residential. We are proposing rezoning it entirely to office residential or neighborhood business. It is, this is sort of stemming from, you know, conversations with staff and from departments, but also from trying to be consistent, again, with the Legacy Lewis and Comprehensive Plan. This area is in the retrofit growth sector. These are suburban and primarily auto-oriented areas, considered underutilized and are recommended to be further developed, redeveloped or reused when appropriate. And we, you know, looking to do it all in one, one district. And landing on OR and B, it provides more housing options than, well, comparing specifically to the urban enterprise zone. The urban enterprise zone does not allow, I believe, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, does not allow single-family housing. The office residential or the NB zone does allow single-family housing and multifamily housing. The LDR zone compared to the OR is, or higher, more restrictive as far as density is concerned. The OR will allow more density. So it's sort of, to express the word, sort of like a Goldilocks zone between the three of them. It'll allow more housing options and allow slightly more density than the LDR.
Okay. All right, let's see if we have any questions on the board. Mr. Nagin?
Just to clarify, looking at the, the Neighborhood Business District, because it's not called that, right? We're going from twenty thousand to twelve-five hundred, but in urban enterprise, and this is, excuse me, the, uh, the footprint for multifamily dwellings, but urban enterprise allowed five thousand, right? So you could put two and a half times the amount of housing in the urban enterprise than you could in the office, in the, in the Neighborhood Business.
Based on lot size, so that's lot size. If you wanted to have, yeah.
Split them off, yeah, I got you. So, so really what we're kind of doing is creating an average over, over all of it, really, right? To kind of all match that one Neighborhood Business. What we're losing in low-density residential, or what we're gaining in low-density residential, we're losing in urban enterprise. But it's gonna be packaged as one piece. Am I correct on this or am I way off on this?
I think so, to an extent. And I guess I also want to point out with the low-density residential that that seven thousand square feet per dwelling unit, and it doesn't allow two-family, multifamily, single-family attached. So there are a number of residential styles with that Neighborhood Business that would be allowed that would give greater flexibility for the development as well as, you know, just greater, allow smaller lot sizes, let's say, with a single family. I think when we talk about multifamily, it's less of an issue. Seven thousand, you know, square feet per dwelling unit is probably not the best use of the land if you're doing like a multifamily. But if you're doing single family, it would allow some smaller lot sizes. It would allow them to do townhome style where you have houses attached. So it gives greater development flexibility and opportunity to do multiple different styles of housing on the same large parcel, so.
UE is a pretty intense district too. So, I mean, if you want to start allowing light industrial uses and warehouses, that's really not the vision of that neighborhood from a comp plan perspective.
Yeah, the urban enterprise zone allows uses such as hotels, motels, inns, movie theaters, places of indoor assembly, all, many uses that the, the new NB zone would not.
Ms. Cox?
I, I don't know if it's, I'm not reading the map well or if it's late, but the space on the map between UE and Lisbon Street road frontage, what is that? Like Saratoga? What is, yeah, what's the zoning currently? Like I can see where all the other ones are, but this one, the label is off the page.
Right.
Is it industrial?
There's a little I, you can't, it sort of just looks like a line.
Oh, it just looks like a mark on the paper.
Yes.
I see now. Yeah, yeah, okay. And so the only road frontage to this large fuller parcel is currently on Old Lisbon.
Right.
But the zoning of industrial in Lisbon could allow a right-of-way from Lisbon Street.
So-
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Sure. The current zoning of industrial on the road frontage on Lisbon Street could allow, should the parties want to work it out, a right-of-way from Lisbon Street to this parcel and not just Old Lisbon. Like there would be nothing that would restrict the addition of a-
A road through there.
Yeah, and I use road real lightly, without any expectations or premonitions.
So-
Mr. Pines?
Following on, on Member Cox's point here. So, you know, hypothetically, let's say you were a developer and you got the land as it stands right now. You could build just a little row of single-family houses up against Old Lisbon Road. You could build a right-of-way back into the OR, now Neighborhood Business District. You could build apartment buildings there, things that are gonna have more traffic. And then, let's say you wanted to have like a retail shopping plaza. You could put that in the back and have all of that traffic flow through to Old Lisbon. Whereas if we rezone it to Neighborhood Business, it takes away some of those intensive uses that are currently permitted on the property. It makes it more consistent, you know, with the character of the neighborhood. Yes, it could allow for multifamily directly on the street frontage with Old Lisbon Road, which is a little different than what's there now. But overall, it would keep there from being more intensive uses on the rear part of the property that would still affect folks on Old Lisbon Road. Is that about right?
Right, right. Mr. Markott?
I'm quite familiar with this property. And what we don't see, flat photo, are the elevations. The UE was probably done in eighty-eight. I think it may have predated Jim Leisen. And I remember walking portions of that property in the past. I've camped on that property. I know that the UE is the lowest portion of fifty-five Old Lisbon Road. As you can see, there's some wetland that crosses over from Phillips Elmet into the UE. And that's why it was UE in the past, because you could have come right off of Enterprise and put something there. And having had a friend relationship with the past owner of this property, I know that that was part of the possible plans. There was housing as part of the plans too, but no deal ever went through. Everything was difficult because that, there are elevations and that may be part of the reason for the different zones as well. The UE at the bottom, the low-density residential behind the former Wiseman Farm, former mayor of Lewiston. And it was farmland. Like I said to a staff member earlier today, that a portion of that property, particularly behind Saratoga, could probably very well be an extension of the industrial complex. Industrial Park is, we call it in Lewiston. Now, if the only road of access is from Old Lisbon Road, there's going to be concerns with traffic flow, intensity of traffic flow. No, we don't want to create an intensity of having all three of these current zones be industrial and an expansion of things that are on Lisbon Street and within the industrial park. But need to be very careful what we do here. And why I envisioned the various layers of this agenda item, making this an entire OR as it was stated, but it's gonna be an NB and then creating some sort of neighborhood in there with smaller footprints, if that's the right vocabulary, square footage of the parcels, and then putting something in the middle of it because it kind of, it's, I'm sure it's not being pitched as a planned community, but it's big enough for some sort of community with as many houses as you can put in there and some neighborhood retail stores or many restaurants. Need to be very careful that you don't destroy the nature of the, the bigger neighborhood. The people who have enjoyed quality of life on Old Lisbon Road, on Old Webster Road. And if anybody's traveled Old Lisbon Road, as I have in the years, it's not a great road. That, there, there was a suggestion of using this entire fifty-five Old Lisbon Road for a school at one point. Made no sense. One of the discussions was trying to get the buses up to fifty-five Old Lisbon Road from Webster Road, or Webster Street. I don't know where it-
It's road.
It's, it's road and then it turns into Old Webster Road at the junction there.
Yeah.
And want to be very, very careful with each of these steps on the way up through.
Okay.
That's why I was concerned about what we've discussed earlier.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions before I open it up to the public? Okay, in that case, I will open it up to the public. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against? If you would step up to the podium, give your name and address, and you have three minutes. And Mr. Hediger will be the timekeeper.
Thank you, good evening. My name's Matthew Collins, fifteen Old Lisbon Road in Lewiston. My wife and I have been there, have owned it since nineteen eighty-seven. It's a nice lot. It's ideal for us. It's got that rural feel, but it's still convenient to town. The development of seventy acres of twenty, twenty thousand square foot lots could mean a large number of houses. It's not all bad, you know, additional property taxes that the city would gain from this, you know, we all benefit from that. Yes, I have some concern with traffic and noise. And, you know, Ms. Cox read my mind when she mentioned the possibility of having an entrance off of Lisbon Street to this area of land. If the only entrance and exit was off Old Lisbon Road, that'd be a tremendous additional amount of traffic. But if there was a second way to get into and out of this area, that would be better as far as, you know, keeping the traffic down. And it was mentioned the possibility, if this is developed, of road improvements to Old Lisbon Road, which definitely, you know, I'm in, you know, favor of that. It's just that even the road and the condition it's in, we're concerned about the speed of the traffic going by, even though it's supposed to be twenty-five miles an hour right in front of my house. We have to be real careful crossing the road to get to our mailbox or a newspaper tube. Anyway, I, I'm not speaking in favor or opposition, but I do notice that, you know, there's a considerable stretch of open area between Elmet Technologies and the Steel Service Center. And I would think that a road could be put in there that goes up to this property. I'd feel more comfortable about it if there could be a second entrance and exit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor or against?
Hi, Roger Roy, seventy-two Old Lisbon Road. I'm going to kind of go over what he just said. I would strongly recommend that another entrance be put in. I know that in eighty-seven, eighty-eight, when Correa owned the property, we talked about putting one, either extending Enterprise Street at the lower end or to Saratoga between the distillery and, I think, the roofing business. That's their beacon. Those would be ideal slots and take traffic away from the Old Lisbon Road. I wouldn't recommend rezoning the upper part that's on the Old Lisbon and keep that residential so that there could be a couple, two, or three house lots there. But the bottom part, if it was changed to OR, then the entrances would be from either Saratoga Enterprise or possibly from Lisbon Street. The only thing that makes sense, in my opinion, that that land severely, from that blue line, that horizontal blue line where the Old Lisbon Road is, from there down, it is severely pitched. So there is a very, very steep grade right there. So it's not ideal housing, as far as that goes, because of the slope of the land. And I don't think soars and water would be tough over there because it's all ledge. On another concern, I've been, I talked to Frank Correa several times over the years about purchasing the property, and he had no interest in it. About five years ago, I knew that he was in default with taxes. And I contacted the city about, you know, what he owed on taxes and, you know, why is the city allowing him to continue not paying his taxes? And they says, well, he's on a payment plan, but his payments were less than the amount of taxes that were every year. So it kept growing, growing, and growing. This past year, after Frank died, I contacted the city about, you know, what's going on with the property. And basically, I wasn't happy for the fact that I was just lied to. Trying to get information from the city was like trying to pull teeth. It was like top-secret information. They didn't want to say anything. Had to pull it out of them, and what I pulled out of them was straight lies. And now they had told me it was going to be on the market. It was going to go out to Dubois Realty in September. Nothing has happened. You try contacting the city about it, and they just don't want to say anything. Everything is tight-lipped. And now we have this, and it says...
I'm sorry, your time is up.
That we have an owner. Somebody wants to buy it, and now we don't know who.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor or against? In that case, I'll close it up to the public, and I will return it to Ms. Cox.
I just would like to clarify that I believe the, and I am trying not to confuse things or look ahead, but the memo that we were provided by Ms. Parker actually will lend clarity to the fact that it is not that there's a known owner, that they would like to list it. That's one of the issues that's considered tonight. And so I don't think that it is that there's something proposed. I think that the city is looking to thoughtfully develop that property, that there isn't an owner yet. But that's the next item. So we'll have that conversation.
And anyone, anyone else on the board wish to make any comments or questions? Mr. Najin?
The only comment I'd like to make, well, first, I want to acknowledge the comments made by Mr. Collins and Mr. Roy, and I thank you for coming and speaking. The, one of the things that stands out for me is this is a proposal that's put forward jointly with economic development and planning. And for me, that's pretty exciting, to be honest. I enjoy the proactive in attracting development from the community. Also, that lends favorably in my eyes, but yeah, that's what I wanted to share.
Okay. Anyone else wish to make any questions or comments? Mr. Markot?
Looking at the map directly during this discussion and hearing the comments made from the public, and the concerns being primarily along Old Lisbon Road, I would be of the sentiment that as long as we left the LDR, LDR, I'd be amenable to changing the OR and UE to an OR or even the NB, which I'm not necessarily still in favor of. But keeping in mind that when something goes to the council, that they also realize that, and probably would have to, if the top portion remains LDR, find an access point from Enterprise or Lisbon to that multi-layered area. Because the impact of Old Lisbon Road would be huge. I mean, the traffic, the lot sizes, I think somebody from the public may have referred to twenty, but I thought I heard staff earlier say twelve-five. So that would mean even more potential parcels for development. If it was to be developed. And of course, that's an F. I know what council may be looking for, what the plan is, but it's still an F. And then, if that doesn't happen, then what else is permissible as a matter of right under a new zoning use, or maybe even come back and change the zoning use to something that will sell if there's difficulty in achieving the current goal. But I'll not support changing this entire seventy acres to NB, as it were.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Pine?
Just wanted to make a comment on an observation here. So in terms of street frontage allowed, minimum lot, street frontage, which is basically what's affecting your sort of view from existing houses on Old Lisbon Road. You know, what type of house is going to be there? You know, looking at the existing lots that are developed on the other side of the street, they have about the same frontage. There's some smaller ones, but they tend to get their square footage by going further back, right? And what I'm noticing here is that Neighborhood Business, aka OR, and Low Density Residential, which is the current zoning, have the same minimum frontage. So in terms of it being, you know, this view from the street, you're going to basically have the same view. The lots just won't be as deep. And that's only going to really affect the person in the house, you know, because you can't see behind the house, right? So I hope that alleviates some concerns around the type of development that might be there. Yes, you will be allowed to have multifamily, which is new. But in terms of how it's going to look, and that also has the same street frontage requirements. In terms of how it's going to sit on your street and look from a street view and sort of affect the overall feeling of the place, there's really not too big of a functional difference, except for lot depth.
Thank you, Mr. Markot. Any further, Mr. Najin?
Just really quickly, two other things as well. The development review process would have to happen before, basically, if we approve this, this would be packaged up in an RFP. A developer would have to be found. And then a development review process would go through, which during that development review process, a lot of the concerns that have been voiced would be addressed. You'd be looking at traffic counts in order to figure out what type of traffic controls need to be done on certain roads, access points, all of these types of things. And just as a quick note as well, if you've passed by the Grace Lawn property recently, you're pretty amazed at what you can do with dirt nowadays. You can level pretty much anything. But yeah, I just wanted to bring up those points.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Markot?
I don't think the issue is about view, because like we said earlier, land drops several times from Old Lisbon Road down to the industrial park. So it's not really about view. It's about traffic intensification.
Well, that would be addressed during the development process.
Which will be a matter of right. And all we'll do is cursory, we'll review it, maybe make some suggestions, and then it'll happen, probably to the chagrin of the neighbors. I mean, we're talking about the intensification of traffic along Old Lisbon Road, which cannot handle it. I tell you, it's especially slick in the winter, and it's uphill from Old Webster Road to the former fifty-five Old Lisbon Road. And before it straightens out, but it can be very narrow at places. It's an older road as you travel towards South Lisbon Road.
Mm-hmm, yes, thank you.
I will not support anything but a compromise on that upper parcel.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Cox?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion pursuant to Article seven, Section four, and Article seventeen, Section five of the Zoning and Land Use Code to send a favorable recommendation to the City Council for amendments to Appendix A, zoning and land use code, Article three, official map, as proposed.
Do I have a second?
I would second that.
Okay. Any further comments and discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Najin?
Yes.
Michael Markot?
No.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson?
Yes.
Thank you, all for coming.
So those, the folks that have been here tonight and toughing it out, this will go to the council next Tuesday. So I'm not sure where it's going to be on the agenda yet, but there'll be two more hearings that you can go to before the council. So council meeting is here at seven o'clock, if you're interested in coming. Yeah. Rest now, right?
It can also be viewed on, there's a YouTube channel if you want to watch the meeting.
Okay. Next is Article twelve, Performance Standards. Give me just a minute to find that. Yep, absolutely.
Can I say something to Mr. Markot?
Sure.
I just wanted to thank you for bringing out some things that I didn't consider.
I knew Frank Correa very well, and I've lived in this community my entire sixty years. So I get a little passionate on some of these items.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Good night.
So Article twelve, Performance Standards, we have two main changes being suggested this evening. The first one has to do with erosion control. So there is a requirement at the state level that there be additional language added to municipal zoning ordinances. So this language here...
Do we have a time limit as to when we're supposed to end? Isn't it, our meeting's supposed to end at nine?
Yeah, there is something in the policy unless you folks want to extend the meeting.
Just recognizing, we've still got at least one other item in this agenda item, and there's folks in the audience here for the items beyond this. And it's been the choice of this board previously, and I mentioned this for some of our newer members, to not take up a new agenda item after nine PM. And I wanted to offer that courtesy and awareness of both the time and our guests.
And I would, I think there are people here from out of town who came here specifically to discuss some of the other business.
Absolutely. So what is the board's...
I think we have to finish this agenda item first.
Right.
Do a time check and poll the board. And then figure out what of the remaining agenda items we do tackle, because I suspect it will not be all of them.
Yeah, it's, no, because we're really getting on in time. So let's finish these two items on the public hearings, and then we'll check what the time is and go from there. Continue, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. So the changes, the new language regarding erosion control just specifies that when you're disturbing one acre or more, you have to comply with DEP's Chapter five hundred rules. Staff's opinion is this is duplicative with other requirements, but the state's requiring it. So we're adding the language here. And then just so we don't have to talk about it again, we're adding it in Article thirteen when we get to the Development Review Standards procedure. So, or Section four in the Erosion and Sedimentation Control section. So we, the main thing that's changing in Article twelve is staff has worked across departments to look at making changes to the home occupation requirements. So this has come up for quite some time. There's been some struggles with our current home occupation requirements. A few months ago, the board made an allowance for non-family members, for one staff person to work in a home occupation, which was a great improvement. Tonight, we're coming forward to essentially create two different categories, well, three different categories of home occupation, if you will. The last item on here, number three, is when you don't need a permit at all. So that's if it's not specifically listed as a home occupation one or two and does not generate vehicular or pedestrian traffic and does not include a sign such as a home office or telecommuting, then you don't need a permit at all. So that way, they don't have to fill out their forty-dollar permit, and staff doesn't have to give you a permit for your home office. Home occupation one is meant to be requiring a permit, but it's a lighter home occupation. So that one is something where, I guess I have to back up, I'm so sorry. There's this criteria that we currently have where you have to meet these different criteria to be a home occupation, as opposed to a business that wouldn't meet the home occupation use and would be a different commercial listing. So we've only made a few changes here. You know, the first couple are not different. We are allowing exterior storage, which is new, so C two is a new addition. Staff feels that if you're fully screening it, there's no reason why you couldn't use some exterior space and have that, you know, count towards your total business area. We've added the ability to essentially grow food, so plants grown for sale, food or sale, meeting the requirements down below. Farm stands, so long as they meet further requirements. So there'd be requirements as to parking and so forth, and they would have an additional kind of licensing process. And then you have to meet the requirements for parking for the home occupation. So then we jump down to E, which is, we're actually cleaning up some language. When we looked at E, what we've stricken out there is language that planning staff didn't fully understand. When we got digging into this, of course, sometimes that happens. You look at language and you think, what does this mean? So that's a cleanup where we felt like that language is not serving anyone. So we're eliminating that. F is brand-new. So this is, right now, you can't have any stock-in-trade, so essentially you can't have product on site. We regularly are flexible with that, depending upon what the situation is. So this cleans that up by saying that you can sell products. They're limited to those which are grown, crafted, assembled, or altered on the premises. Or to remote sales where it's mail order, or you're delivering product to people. Or accessory or incidental to other services provided. You have that one-chair beauty shop, and when they get their haircut, they're buying shampoo. We do also have some requirements later on about sales, so it's not a free-for-all. G is brand-new. That requires that you're not bringing trash and other waste products from your business onto your property to be disposed of. Unless, let's say, you're composting and you're a landscaper, for example, you would need to get a special permit, which is part of the home occupation two requirements, which we'll get to in a minute. And then finally, the last criteria you have to meet is we've excluded certain specific uses that staff doesn't feel fit with a home occupation. So those include automotive repair, which includes body shops and lubrication services, painting of vehicles, boats, trailers, or machinery, welding, smokehouses, slaughterhouses, industrial uses... industrial uses, kennels and breeding of domesticated animals, automotive detailing, where more than one vehicle is being serviced at a time, and businesses where more than one client or family is being served at a time. So you don't have lots of people waiting and parking and, you know, that sort of thing. So if you can meet these criteria, then you're either a home occupation one or two. The home occupation one requires the staff permit and that means that you're meeting this criteria A through H and that your products are being sold off-site or online. If people are coming to your facility to buy products, then you're immediately kicked into home occupation two, which we'll get to, which requires extra permitting. For business and professional offices and other occupations where the public comes on-site and which care for one client or family at a time by appointment only. So we don't want, you know, lots of people showing up. We want it to be a music lesson for Johnny and Sue and they come for an hour and then the next family comes with their music lesson. Or let's say it's family therapy, you know, the family comes and it's not group therapy with like twenty people coming for a session. Including and similar activities like music lessons, medical services without a laboratory, personal services, one-chair salon, medical marijuana caregivers. So home occupation two are those businesses that still meet that criteria A through H, but they have to get a conditional use permit at the Board of Appeals in addition to their staff permitting. And those uses would include the farm stands, small engine repair, automotive detailing, woodworking shops, food sales and handling or processing, contractors and any occupation that involves sales on the premises, but it excludes remote sales. And so really, the purpose for that conditional use permit, you're really familiar with conditional use permits, but is to talk about hours of operation. How many vehicles are you going to have on-site? If you do have a farm stand, do you have adequate parking? Are you only selling your products? You're not selling like, you know, it's like not a giant farm stand, it needs to be limited to your items. So it allows the board to look at a case-by-case basis, look at how close you are to your neighbors and look at those impacts. So that's the proposal and we're, we're open to suggestions. Economic Development, Code Enforcement and Planning Staff has thoroughly vetted this and we're, we're pretty satisfied with what we've pulled together. We think it allows for a much greater suite of uses that could be home occupations, but provides a lot of protections for putting appropriate limits on those. And also simplifies things by having certain uses just not require a permit.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board? So we're all set with this one, so I'll entertain a motion.
Shelley covered quite a bit in her five minutes.
Yes, she did. As we start to gauge the time that it takes to move through the agenda, part of that is the presentation time and that was thorough, Shelley, thank you.
Shall I make a motion?
Yeah, please do.
Onward. Make a motion, I'd like to make a motion pursuant to Article seven, Section four and Article seventeen, Section five.
Technically a public hearing if somebody's.
Oh, my apologies.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry, guys.
I would open this up to the public and if anyone has any comments, please.
We lost the guy that we told this meeting was about, so.
Oh, okay.
But he was in favor.
Great.
Oh, good. All right, nobody's standing up, so I'm closing the public and now we'll entertain a motion.
I'm going to give it. I'd like to make a motion pursuant to Article seven, Section four and Article seventeen, Section five of the Zoning and Land Use Code to send a favorable recommendation to the City Council for amendments to Appendix A, zoning and land use code, Article twelve, performance standards.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roger, okay, Roger or Michael, either one? Any further discussion? Okay, Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Nagin?
Yes.
Michael Markot? Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson? Yes. Okay, onward. Article thirteen, development review and standards.
Okay, so this one's simple. We took the word Mylar out, replaced it with paper and we added that erosion control language.
Nice work.
All right.
Nice work, Shelley, on average.
All right, any further questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Is this also?
Does anyone else want to make a motion because you are invited to the table?
Public hearing.
Public hearing. Oh, public hearing, oh, sorry.
This is why we don't go after nine, everybody.
That's right. Okay, public hearing, anyone wish to speak in favor or against this proposal? Seeing none, I'll close it and I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion pursuant to Article seven, Section four and Article seventeen, Section five of the Zoning and Land Use Code to send a favorable recommendation to the City Council for amendments to Appendix A, zoning and land use code, Article thirteen, performance standards.
Development review.
Development review and standards.
Do I have a second? Roger Dupree, any further discussions or questions? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Nagin?
Yes.
Michael Markot?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson?
Yes.
Okay, it is now nine oh six.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, you sure can.
Partly for our administrative audience as well as our guest audience tonight, I don't know what it will take to make it through the rest of this agenda, though I am willing to try. But I know that items, and I would really like to get and start with item A as we look at everybody in the audience. Yeah, I know, I see you guys. B, C, D are all city council next steps. Are all those city council next steps for like tomorrow? If we did not take up B, C and D and focused on A and then went home to our families and dinner.
There's also E.
There's also E.
But I, but E doesn't go to city council. So I'm just really focused on like, are the dispositions in B, C and D triggering action or delaying? Yeah.
I have a different outlook. I know that there's somebody here for item C, I'd like to take C up first. I know that E is probably one of those quick items, like the one we just did. So I'd like to get those two done and as far as the other three, at the discretion of the rest of the board.
I think we can do it all.
I mean.
I'm going to need a full seven-minute break at some point then.
Okay, well.
No consensus there, go nuts, Chair.
Oh, good Lord. Okay, so, all right, so you want to do, you want to do C and E?
C and E and then?
So C is seventy-six Cody Street and E is?
I guess I just want to interject and say that A.
I think E is going to take us a while.
They asked months ago to be on this specific agenda and traveled here.
I'm sorry?
Item A, which is the.
Yes, we definitely will do A.
Okay, just wanted to make that clear.
We're going to make you all happy tonight.
We're, yeah, so we're going to do A for sure, but, but because we think that C, I think E is going to be.
Did you mean this one? Changing the language around eating, it usually.
I think I'd like to table E.
That would be a simple.
I'd like to make a motion to table item E under other business.
Okay, do we need a vote to table?
Second?
We need a second.
Don't we need a vote to table?
Yes.
Okay, so do I have a second to table? Okay, Roger Dupree, any further discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Nagin?
I'll abstain.
Okay, Michael Markot?
No.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson? Yes. So we have six yes, one abstention.
Nope, you had five yes, one no, one abstention.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. It's after nine, what can I say? Okay, so we'll get back to this one. All right, so C. Okay, what about the property on?
We are convinced that C is going to be short and will be on A momentarily.
Okay, what about D?
Nope, C and then A.
Okay.
Okay.
Onward.
Onward, C, okay.
All right, C.
Seventy-six Cody Street is a twelve-point-eight-seven acre parcel. It has frontage on each Cody Street and Fairmount Street. It is city-owned, it's been considered in the past for use as a city park, but it has not been developed as such. The adjacent landowner, who owns four eighty-seven Webster Street and four ninety-three Webster Street, which are abutting to each other and abutting this parcel, has approached the city multiple times over the years and requested to purchase a fifty-foot-wide portion of land abutting his properties. So the proposal is for an area that's just under point-two acres, be sold to the abutter and then they would be required to merge it in two portions so that there's a portion that goes with four eighty-seven Webster and a portion that goes with four ninety-three Webster Street. The city's disposition policy, three-point-three, private sector request to purchase a lease, has a procedure, the city administrator in accordance with that has determined the property to be surplus and is asking the planning board to make a recommendation on the disposition of that portion of seventy-six Cody Street. You can see the attached memo from Public Works that states that the leaving of that portion of the parcel from city holdings would not impact the ability to develop it as a park in the future if the city were to decide to develop the remaining portions of the land as a park. So.
Do we have any questions or comments? Ms. Cox?
The merger require both of his parcel, her, their parcels, forty-seven and four-ninety-three, as well as the new parcel, so there'd be like one master parcel?
Yeah, what we're requiring, so if you look at the last map, that four-ninety-three Webster Street is actually an undersized lot. This little fifty-by-fifty portion that would be merged with it would make it a conforming lot or more conforming. It seemed like it would be conforming based on our, you know, rough estimates. So that's why staff is recommending that it be specific, that it would go with the two parcels and not be one stretch of land, you know, assigned to one parcel or the other. It also just keeps it cleaner.
Mr. Markot?
I heard the question a little bit differently. So a portion of the back would be added to four ninety-three, a portion would be added to four eighty-seven. You're not going to combine four ninety-three and four eighty-seven together?
No, no. No requirement that they would combine the two parcels.
You understood my question, but I understood her response. We all landed in the same space.
Yes, okay. And any other questions, comments? This is not a public hearing, so I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Oh, all right.
Make a motion pursuant to Article seven, Section four-H of the Zoning and Land Use Code to send a favorable recommendation to the City Council for the disposition of a portion of seventy-six Cody Street.
Period.
Period, there's no conditions.
No, there's no conditions. Do I have a second? Mr. Dupree? All right, any further discussion and comments from the board?
Is there a reason why we wouldn't just recommend all the way back to the ghost street that's there, just to like?
Well, that's because it's, that's not what they're asking.
Because it wasn't proposed that way. And the city's not selling it that way.
Got it, got it, got it.
Great question, though.
Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Nagin?
Yes.
Michael Markot?
Yeah.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson? Yes. All right, goes to city council tomorrow.
No, that's going to go into sixteenth, Ms. Delaney's. Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, okay.
Good luck.
Good luck, okay. Avesta. A, discussion of, on the DeWitt Choice Neighborhood Development with Lewiston Housing Authority and Avesta. Whoever wants to come up, please do, you're just, you're tired out.
Ms. Elliott?
We're going to have some pictures for you to look at.
Oh, my goodness gracious.
Coffee, coffee.
We didn't bring coffee.
Come on, guys, you should have known we were going to be here till midnight.
Uh, they're the same. It's a, I can't remember which one.
It's a PDF or the PowerPoint.
It's an emergency backup.
Yeah.
Bring all.
Oh, yes.
We printed it too.
Oh, yeah. On Zoom, PDF works so much better.
Full screen. Yeah, it's working. It's good up there.
That's right. Is here okay?
Blue here and it looks green there.
Art is contextual.
Ah, yes, I realize that.
Eye of the beholder.
All right, if you would identify yourselves for the record and, and then have at it, please.
All right, I'm Catherine Elliott, I'm a development officer at Avesta Housing.
Jesse Thompson, Kaplan Thompson Architects, and Cara Beyond is with me.
And thank you for agreeing to extend the meeting past your nine o'clock cutoff, really appreciate it.
Hey, why not?
So as you would have seen in your memo, we tonight are looking forward to just having a discussion about some of the progression in the design that we've done for the DeWitt site. This is phase two of the Choice developments and there have been a number of changes since the last time I believe this group in some form saw either images or context for this, probably around the time of our application to HUD back in 2020. So since then, we've done a variety of different things. We've done geotech testing, we've done a boundary survey, we've learned more about the site. There's also been some evolution of funding and those conversations that I'm sure you all are aware of, some modifications that we've made to get to budget on the other buildings, have changed our approach a little bit here. So we have raised a few different things that we want to talk about this evening. Some of them are just kind of FYI heads-up to things that will be coming once we're at the development review proposal stage. And then some things are kind of a check-in, gut-check reaction, looking for thoughts on some of the design aspects that we're thinking about to make sure that it's meeting what this group is looking for as stewards of the good design that we want to bring to the downtown. So should we start with the site plan?
Yeah, absolutely, and I think Catherine said it well, which is this is a conversation at this point because this is, there's no vote here tonight, this is just, this is what we're looking at and want to make sure we're on the right track.
Okay.
So, let's see.
Jesse, can you just pull the microphone a little closer to you?
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm clicking in the wrong way. There we go. Okay. So we, this site doesn't need too much introduction, we could see it out the windows if we looked, but this is Forty and Sixty Pine stretching across the park.
And Fifty-four.
And Fifty-four. And Fifty-four as well. It's the length of pine from Bates to Park is the site. And this is the current conditions of this site. As we know, that Forty Pine is a disused bank building that's in pretty sorry shape. It's got some pretty bad mold and mildew on the inside. Sixty Pine is currently occupied, one-story building. Both these buildings would come down to build this project. Also worth noting on this site, there's a lot of curb cuts, there's a lot of curbs that kind of fade in and out. There's, it's not a very sort of clean and neat piece. And this is pictures from when we were up in a not-so-pretty season a little bit ago, looking from Bates Street towards the lot. This is a view right from the center of the park, we can see the old Sun Journal in the back. That view is kind of significant with that center there. And there is a utility easement that runs right smack in front of us, there is gas lines and electric lines that run right through there. There's an easement we won't be building on top of that area for that reason and other reasons. And then here is a view in, maybe we'll get these leaves soon, now that it's raining. But this is a view from Park Street, so I think we're all familiar with this, this is inches away from us. What we wanted to show is that we've been collaborating with Public Works, Economic Development, the other parts of the Choice team. There are, there's projects at work in Kennedy Park, there is a sculpture element coming, there's some round, that sort of round circle we're showing below is been, I think is out for bid at the moment. And we are currently discussing to rework Pine Street to have all parallel parking and to have a new crosswalk that crosses in the middle of the block in the center, to make this a safer spot to get across and to make sure there's good crosswalks, good lighting. And this is not as part of this project, it's just happening at the same time. And so the city and Public Works is working on this as we are working on the lot. And then you can also see that we are proposing two buildings. We're calling them Building A and Building B, they will probably in the end be Forty Pine and Sixty Pine, but in this presentation, they're A and B. And this shows where they are located on the lot. They are built the way we used to build buildings in cities. They are built close to the sidewalk, they are downtown buildings, they meet the corners of the lot and they have open space in the middle where that view looked before.
And one thing to note is that the sidewalk location would be changing on the building side of Pine Street. You can see the property line is right up next to the buildings in that site plan image, which is actually most of the way through the existing sidewalk. So the street modifications that would be happening in tandem with this would address So the street modifications that would be happening in tandem with this would address that property line issue so that the sidewalk would be on public property. And then we would be able to maintain the setback requirements. Centreville Zone has a maximum five-foot setback. So five feet off of the property line as it currently is would put our buildings in the middle of the sidewalks. So this will-
This is a surprise in the survey that what feels like a public sidewalk is actually on private land.
So, so those modifications will happen kind of in tandem with this.
And what you see in this site plan is a sidewalk on public land owned by the city and buildings on private land. And I think it's a better arrangement and this recurbing and reorientation will make the sidewalk and the things that, you know, the city will line up with the lot boundaries by the end of this. So that's one thing we've been working on. And we've had really good assistance from the city staff and departments over this. This is our current landscape site design. And again, preliminary, this is a discussion point. This is not a done deal, but we can sort of describe some elements here. What you're looking on the left, Building A and Building B, and we'll zoom in in a second. We are placing car parking behind the buildings, not on the, on the street, but we are adding parallel parking all along Pine Street. We're closing all those curb cuts and we're gaining public parking all along Pine. So there's more parking on the north side of the block than there is currently because there's less driving in and out. So that's sort of a nice advantage that this is building. At the same point, we are proposing car parking behind. The car parking is, you come in from Bates or Park to access these car parking lots. So they're up in the back and we are currently proposing 41 car parking spaces. There is, in the Centreville District, commercial uses are not required to provide any off-street parking and residential are required to provide .75 spaces per apartment. We are proposing to provide 20 car parking spaces for the proposed commercial spaces on Building B, which has a 10,000 square foot or so retail space. And we're proposing nine car parking spaces for the three retail spaces on the left side on Building A.
Sorry, just while you're right there, I don't think we've heard how many units of housing you are.
Good point. 104 units, yeah. And it's worth noting that this site is within the quarter-mile radius of a municipal parking garage that has sufficient space. So that's where we would plan to locate our residential parking spots.
Yeah, thank you. 52 per building. So 52 in Building A and 52 there. And a mix of apartment sizes in each.
One and two bedrooms.
And as we zoom in on the building on the left, you can start to see the way this arranged. Now, what's important is what we currently are showing is the residential entrance where you live. If you live here and you come home, you'll come in off Park. So your front door is over to the left on the quieter street. On Pine Street is Retail 1, Retail 2, a community room, and Retail 3. So there's proposed three retail spaces along Pine Street facing our most important street, facing the park. And there is an inset entrance in front of the community room that sort of widens the sidewalk and a space for people to gather a bit on the private property. And then the green is landscape buffers. So there is landscape buffers around the front edge of these buildings in between the property line and the building. And then a new sidewalk on the city property, street trees, all those amenities. And then, so on the left, upper left is the lobby. So that's where, you know, the lobby where you get your mail, where you come in and out of your home if you live upstairs. And then you can start to see the car parking. We have accessible parking, which we're required to provide for each apartment building. That's located in the back. And resident loading, those kind of spaces we're roughing out. There is a possible location for dumpster storage for retail use or restaurant use back there. If there's a restaurant, there probably will be a grease trap located under this parking lot. We, and next to Retail 3, you can start to see the site design. We're trying to leave space for outdoor dining for a restaurant to come into that plaza space. This is getting eyes on the park. People coming in and out of these spaces, eating in public, those kind of spaces around Retail 3 there.
Is there any bike storage in the lobby?
There will likely be bike storage inside the building, insecure bike storage, and there will be on-street as well, parking for people coming in and out.
Jesse, I have a question. So you mentioned that the Park, Park Street side will be like the main entrance for residents?
Yes.
I think I saw that there is actually, does it say that there's a residential entry on the front of the building, too? Because it would be-
To the community room.
Oh, just to the community room?
Yeah, thank you. That's a, that's a door to the community room. And that, we're sort of calling them residential entries, but those are, there are some design overlays standards we want to talk about today about commercial entrances and number of commercial entrances. And that's a thing we just want to discuss. So we're sort of trying to point out there's possibly one, two, three, four commercial entrances along this building, just of note.
How long is this building, again?
Well, it's on a, it's on 225 feet of frontage, which is how the design overlay standard is measured by frontage.
It's like the same or less than a comparable stretch on Lisbon Street, right around the corner. How many entrance, commercial entrances you would find in a-
Sorry, one other question. Retail 3, there's that stairwell and then I see the ADA parking there that says it's resident parking. Is there a way to, for residents to get in at that end of the building? Or would they be going through the parking lot over to Park Street to enter?
They would likely be walking down and then screen left and there'd be a door. There's sort of a line shown right below where it says 193 FFE L.
Oh, okay.
And that's the ability to get into a secure door, get to the elevator, get upstairs. So you could-
Get your mail.
Get your mail. Those pieces, yeah.
One question. What is FFE L?
Finished floor elevation. So that's the height-
Which will be relevant here shortly. So glad you asked.
One really significant thing-
Because there's an 11-foot drop on that.
There is, indeed.
Is really significant. It's, it's, it's really deceptive. When you stand on Pine Street, you know there's a slight slope, but it's 11 feet difference from Bates to Park. It's a full building story and you don't feel it when you're there, but it's there and it's significant. And so every building entrance has to have an accessible entrance. You're not allowed to put steps in front like we would in the old days. So we need to be able to have accessible retail entrances and we have 11 feet of drop. And this is one of the trickier technical things that Kara and I and the landscape architects have been working on. And so what we've been trying to make sure we can do is this building here, for example, you're seeing that we have different heights. So the sidewalk at 193, the residential entrance, the retail is actually a foot and a half higher. Then the community room is another foot and a half up again. And Retail 3 is another foot and a half up again. So there's four different concrete slab elevations in the building to make this all work.
Do you have a front view?
We will, yes. That's what you said, front view?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to ask.
We're coming to that. Yep.
Now, these are three-story buildings?
We're proposing five-story buildings.
Five stories.
And that's the difference between 2020 and what we're showing. Because we, there's, I think we had 70 apartments?
71.
71 in 2020 and we now are proposing 104. And so that's a, that's a substantial difference we're here to review with the board. So, yeah, I will move quicker. On the right, let's just say the retail, this is one retail space. So it has one center entrance for security reasons. It's a 10,000 square foot contiguous retail space. And for security, they only want one front door. And so that front door is in the middle. And then the entrance for this building's residential is on the right over on Bates Street in a similar format. It's sort of the flip of the building on the left. And then in the center of, between the two buildings, we are proposing, the retail space on the right has asked for an outdoor dining space. It's raised, it's off the retail. So if you buy food, you could go out, eat outside, but you, to leave, you still have to leave through the main checkout for security. So this is a raised up off-the-plaza spot. You can have tables and chairs, be outside, but you haven't, you can't walk into this from down below. So it's secure, separated, but, you know, so you can pay, basically managing customers. And then the green arc, and so this new plaza shape echoes the shape designed by the city's landscape architect on the other side. So it's a sort of similar shape and format. And then, and so I think just worth noting, the, the really critical context is what context this building's built in. This is the DeWitt Hotel that was built from 1890 through 1960, 60 before it was torn down. And this was, there were five-story buildings in the historic record on this site. Sort of this tremendous building. And, you know, porches looking over the park and you can see there's similar-sized buildings next to us on the record. So there's a history of buildings on the park of this scale, which I think we've all thought was sort of fascinating. And it's like a fabulous place to stay.
Some of our planning board members might have sang in the choral chambers at the hotel.
My goodness.
I did.
It was not me.
No, no, no. When I was in high school, we had our, our glee club would, would be asked to entertain, whether it was the Chamber of Commerce or some breakfast or other. And we'd traipse over there and we would sing. And so I've been in the building.
Well, when we have a groundbreaking for the new building, get all your friends together.
That's how old I am, guys. So I think I'm probably the oldest person in this room. I think you and I are holding hands as we-
Okay. Is that the corner of Bates and Pine there?
Uh, this is, the Lincoln Block is downhill. You can see the cathedral in the background. It's further down.
Yeah, because that elevation change doesn't look anything like this.
No, that's not.
Yeah, we're down further.
Yeah, that's a difference.
This is just further historical context, not related specifically to the site.
Right, right.
Just looking at five-story buildings. I love a theme.
Right, because we have this sort of, it's a little daunting, but we're proposing new buildings on the park, on the most significant park in the city.
Five County is right there and it's like, what, seven?
Hugely significant part of the city. It's a really big deal, this project. And so we're looking at what are the best examples we have. And when we go around Lewiston, there's some themes that emerge. And so we often have these sort of swept corners at the corners of buildings. There are usually a strong roof line that extends out. And then there are sort of these really kind of creative window shavings that show up over and over again. And they're very simple buildings. These are boxes, but they're really nicely decorated boxes. They have beautiful intricate decoration of brickwork, masonry work, but they're, you know, they aren't complicated building shapes. And you just see it all down Lisbon Street, you know, a block away from this. And so these are what we've been looking at. I mean, as soon as we take the wood off the base of this building, there's something gorgeous behind it. And it's luckily hidden there. But, you know, this kind of creativity to the window forms, the roof shape, it shows up over and over again. Sometimes there's diamonds. Sometimes, mostly the time the windows are square. They aren't usually curved windows, but they have a panel or something above them. And the picture's warped, the building isn't, but like, you know, again, there's sort of- Underneath that purple box at the top is something very pretty. It'll, it'll get revealed at some point. And then I think we have these grand civic monuments like the building we're in, which has this very special form, this mass and this scale, this size that we all know is critical and this is going to be a neighbor, too. And so I think this is, these were the things that we're staring at and we knew we need to discuss with the board, but just to show what we've been doing. So what, so what are we proposing? Do you have an outside image? Yes, we do. So what you're looking at is a view down Pine Street of, these are sketches of buildings. They are in computers, but these are not, you know, fully formed, but they show appearance. And what we're doing is we are creating five-story buildings that have a taller section at the end of the blocks. So at Pines and Bates, the building is only five stories tall, but the cornice is raised up. So the cornice is raised. It's a false parapet like a lot of the old buildings did. And the roof overhangs a little broader. It's a little stronger. It gets a little quieter towards the center of the block. And we are pulling in some of those motifs that we see downtown with these sort of arch tops to some of the base level. And you can start to see there's a Juliet balcony, sort of sliding doors up in the apartments so people can have, you know, they're looking out over the park. This is what I think the Choice Plan asked for was eyes on the street, eyes on the park, people living here. And this is, we're starting to see that there's a lot of families looking over the beautiful park. This is a view from right in front of the new art installation that the city is building at the park. And you can start to see that plaza we talked about before. There's that raised area for eating. And you can start to see the buildings going up and down as they go up and down the street. This is that piece. And you can see the old Sun Journal building behind. But some trees, the ability to get in back, there is, there is a grove of trees. It was under discussion earlier tonight that, you know, that green space is in back is to be hopefully retained because there are trees there that we won't be able to plant if we maintain them. And on the left, we see tables and chairs at the, at a retail or a restaurant. And then here's a view, right is sort of if you walk out the door of City Hall. And further on the left, you can see the canopy sticking out from the apartment entrance along Park Street. But then in the front, signs and retail, and there come the retail storefronts. And then a view from Lisbon, sort of in front of the library, in front of City Hall, looking back to the park. And now we can see both buildings. You can see the buildings rising up as we get towards the tree streets. You know, the roof, these roofs that aren't all, they're in all uniform. We're trying not to just do one big, simple thing. It has some variety to it. And then a view of Bates Street. And this is where the neighborhood starts to step down to residential three, two-story scale. It's the transition in between the downtown and that. And these, our buildings are right at that transition we're proposing. And then the, the center of that large retail space has tables and chairs, an entrance. That's where the center of that space is proposed. And then this is a building elevation. So along Bates Street, for example, what a building shape would be. Those little Carlos Crosshatch areas we're seeing as a decorative panel, like the decorations on some of the historic buildings. We've got to do a modern version of that or a contemporary, but this is a five-story building. And then here is the building on the right, I guess 60 Pine Street, Building B. And you can start to see, it's a, you know, these are simple buildings. These are residential apartments. The small windows are bedrooms and the bigger ones are living rooms. And this is where we are currently with design. You see the signage, the entrance to the street. Don't want to work it late, so I'll go reasonably fast. But this, then we can, you know, see the whole pattern together. And then I, just really quickly, these are some of the things we're looking at as touchstones for what, how do we make this building special? It's moments like these that we pick out from Lisbon Street. The arch top windows, the masonry curves. When you go to Main Mill, they start talking about what the Bates Mill patterns were. And those are the Jakarta Loom punch cards that made the patterns on the right. And those patterns are, could be great touchstones for decorative moments. On the left is, when I look at that coverlet, it looks like brick patterning to me. And that's the Bates heritage, the Bates Mill heritage. On the right is the silk screening. We went and met with the curators and they just showed us everything through there. I mean, the military textiles that the Bates Mill produced that had, you know, these, these sort of early computerized patterns. They're really, there's, there's great examples. This is an example of a building we did recently that Hebert Construction built. And this is an example of like a decorative pattern in between windows that we did. This is a building that had sort of railroad heritage. These like, maybe they're train wheels, maybe they're ginkgo leaves. You know, they have this sort of aspect that I think would be nice because this is an affordable housing building. This is going to be, this isn't going to be masonry up five stories. We can't afford that. But we have to have some special moments in between, you know, economy to make this built project work because we, yeah, we don't, you know, have all the money in the world. But that's, so that's the overall design review. We can, we have some specific waivers we wanted to mention to the board we might be asking for that are in context with this.
But we can also pause and get reactions and thoughts from folks at this point, too?
I, I think this is, this is great. It looks so much better than some of the other buildings that have been built recently. I love that you're taking into account the window shapes and, and, you know, the masonry. I think that's, that's beautiful. And I do know that, I did note that you were looking for like the 50% glass and, and 25% glass. And we are going to be revisiting those design standards. So when you guys are ready to really be designing, check with them because they may have changed. Because we will be revisiting that because we have had to give waivers because it just didn't make any sense. And so we have, I'm not sure exactly when we're going to be doing it, but it's going to be soon. So by the time you guys are ready to really be doing design work, check with, with the staff because we will be changing that, I'm sure. So we may not need to do the waivers.
And Kaplan Thompson has done kind of a survey of some of the buildings in, on Lisbon Street in particular to get a sense of what historic glazing percentages have been. So what we're showing here is within the ranges that we've found or that you have found on Lisbon Street. And I, I don't have-
So we can help staff, we can share some of the analysis.
Yeah, if you would share with, with staff that kind of information, that would give us someplace to start when we're looking to redesign.
The words are small, but like we've done calculations of some of the Lisbon Street buildings. It really varies.
We're super sold that the glazing is out of whack.
Yeah, yeah, we are. So, so that's, that, you know, so you don't- Yeah, yeah, we are. So, so that's, that, you know, so you don't have to worry about probably asking for waivers, cuz we're, we're looking at that seriously. Alex?
So. Love the building. It's quite nice. Big fan of your work. Actually, lived around the corner from you when I still lived in Portland. We met once at a party. Lynn, Lynn Rowe, do you still hang out with Lynn Rowe?
I see Lynn once a month.
I used to work for Lynn at the Tortilla.
Oh, alright, okay.
Anyway, but in this capacity, I am the offspring of two people who are trained as architects. So, apologies for my comments. The, the first comment I have is on the sort of courtyard space. And, you know, something that I would ask you to consider is, you know, right now, it is being sort of treated as courtyard. With, you know, those sort of step-down areas. And, and the facades in that area aren't as interesting or as complex. But I, I, I guess I would say, if we could take a look at it to make it more street-like, like even though there aren't cars on it, it's still a thoroughfare. It's still a place where people are going, and so, having these little bumpouts makes it maybe function a little bit differently. The other question or comment that I had, you, you brought up, you know, sort of evoking those curved corners of the buildings on Lisbon Street. And when you look at the window spacing at the corner buildings, you know, the, the facade that's facing the park has a really nice balance to it. And then, I'm guessing it's the internal layout sort of makes the window spacing kind of funky on the corners, and it doesn't. When you're looking at it as a corner, it doesn't provide that symmetry. It gets unbalanced, and in a lot of ways, the residential um, entryways are heavier and more like appealing to your eye, so you sort of end up with this gap on the corner visually. Anyway, but I'll get off my soapbox.
Uh, Karen and I have wrestled with the fact that there's a lot of kitchens, and kitchens don't have windows where the cabinets are, and so, that's like a thing that we kind of.
So, even maybe like paneling, or just something to give it weight, so that your eye is pulled to the corner rather than the edge?
Be on the lookout for fifteen feet. Could be a fifteen-foot blank wall.
Yeah, yeah.
And we are kind of sticklers about that. We'll work with you on the glazing.
Right, right. Listen to Jean.
Great space for change in materials.
Yeah, some murals, okay. Five, five-story high murals.
Amazing ones.
The last thing that I, I have a little concern about, and I understand the need for security for the retail space on the B building. But that's a really long blank storefront of, I mean, yes, there's windows, and you can sort of interact with that, but along with the height changes. You know, I just would be worried that it's gonna kind of feel like you're walking next to a parking garage, or another thing where you're not interacting with the space. But, I get why it exists, but I just, you know, if there's a way to think about how to make that um, more pleasant.
We definitely need it not to be, the windows to be blocked, and we have windows all the way down the facade, so the retailer has to use this for merchandising, and really invite people in. So, you know, it is tough when you put windows in a retail space, and then they cover it in shelving. You know, that happens.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because they want shelving space, and design guidelines want glass, and that conflict is a, a real thing. I think, you know, hopefully, this, it will be enticing that you're seeing a cafe, you're seeing merchandise, and it's drawing you into the store, and it isn't a blank wall. That's certainly the hope, that it's not, beyond putting the back of office there and pulling the lines down.
Right, right.
From my, from my understanding, you have a tenant already who's helping you to design that space, is that correct?
We, we have a, a tenant who is potentially interested in this. There's nothing that's been formalized or finalized through leases or anything like that at this point. But design so far has considered that there would be a single tenant in that space that would have a variety of different uses, food preparation and related.
Food-based, yes.
Yeah, super.
So, the, uh, the other two points, like right down the street, um, you have uh, Oak Street Housing, right? That's five stories. The Helia Estates, uh, the parking garage itself, right? It, it does actually fit uh, the concept of the fi- the five stories. I would just suggest um, that when you're thinking about the textures on the front of the building and the depths, that there's something actually there, that it's not just an illusion. That there's actual depth that, that is, is put into the windows, for instance.
Well, that's part of the design, the design standards.
But maintaining, making it actually happen.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, because we really don't wanna have what happened on Lisbon Street.
No, no.
Cuz that building is not.
Yep, the shadow and depth of the old brick buildings is very tough to replicate these days, but I think it is. And the design overlay, we're not asking for a waiver on that. It has shadow standards and setback standards, and so, I think that is something we're anticipating meeting.
Fantastic.
So, I think that's our goal. But it is, yes, modern construction is figure-out plays of.
Mike?
I'm just curious. I like the idea of the parallel parking, but what happens to all those spaces that are consumed currently? Where, where are they gonna go?
Uh, so, in between, there's a shift in the, um, right now, there's angle parking across the street, and that's gonna go to parallel as well. And then, we're gaining spaces along this. I think there's a slight net loss overall. And then, we're adding spaces on the use in.
On the backside.
A lot of municipal employees are using the, uh, the slanted parking up against the park.
And we're not quite sure what Public Works' plans are, but you know, that I think there's been discussions, because the city is reworking that. Reworking the curb lines, et cetera, so I think that's, it's sort of out of the scope of our projects, but, you know. I think we're, what we're really excited for is that there's better parking for people to quickly stop in, go to, serve the retail spaces, get back out. And I think it's really gonna improve the viability of a business a long time, having that parking along that edge.
Right, okay.
Anybody else have any question? Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry if you spoke to this while I was out of the room. So, Alex was bringing up some questions about the courtyard, and I wasn't sure, is the, not to the exclusivity of, but is the intended use for the green space, that I believe when you showed us the top of the site plan with both A and B, had a courtyard that was kind of centered, and then the parking lots were really kind of structured for A and B's parking lot? Which would put a portion of that courtyard potentially in the sightline of the front courtyard that you were referring to?
I'm totally lost.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not, not, well, here, we can both just grab it.
The courtyard you were talking about is this one, yes?
I'm talking about this whole thing, right through here, that this behaves more like sort of a pedestrian plaza. It's got these intrusions into it.
So, that's my question.
Yeah.
Is, do we want it to be a thoroughfare, knowing that we heard some reference to what, some of, some potential future uses in the works and behind? But is that, is that green space courtyard, if there's a better language for it, let me know, but.
This thing?
Thank you very much, that space. Is it intended largely for ala some of the other, the Wedgwood Choice project? Is it intended for residents, and you do not want to be inviting street traffic, people leaving the cafe, me to try on my scarf from your retail location into the back? And that there's some intentionality of the sightline being narrowed, so that it's for people who live there largely?
That's a great question, and I, I think that we are still trying to figure out exactly how that space is best used, and recognizing that the needs for that space are likely to change over time as the continued neighborhood revitalization happens. So, thinking about how we can design it now, so that it works well and feels safe and visible and useful, but is also adaptable to changes that happen in the future. And so, the goal is that we have a balance of that private and public use, so that we're not necessarily encouraging public foot traffic around to the back of the building, but that feels more of a, like, more intentionally for residents of the building by designating a different location, that plaza area, um, as a more public space.
There is not fencing. It's not controlled.
Right.
So, there aren't security gates and pieces like that in the current design. So, it, it hasn't been, we intentionally aren't controlling.
Not at the exclusion of, but the intention for.
But the, what we're trying to do is, the necking down, the narrowing is making a sense that you are leaving the public world. You're, it's getting more private. And there will be, of course, cameras. There will be security measures. Management will be reviewing it. But it, I think the thought is that if you live here, you might come down with your kid on a quiet space and not go across into the park. But, you know, on a different day, you might. Um, and I think the park is the amazing magic amenity if you live here. You know, it's tremendous open space, accessible, but, you know, this little quieter, more intimate space might be a place that you.
Go with your daughter.
And, and also thinking about what you would be accessing by walking through that space all the way? Because right now, there isn't access to any of those buildings from a door that is served off of that kind of plaza sort of area. So, there wouldn't be a destination for a, you know, the public to travel through that area.
Okay.
Right.
All right, yes.
So, that is a really designed piece that we're getting to get right, and management will have to help, because it's like, some, only so many things design can solve.
Right, and it all depends on what happens with, in, behind what's now One O Four Park, and it's gonna be the shelter and all that. But at that point, it, it's gonna not be a shelter, and it may, you know, they may have funds to build something else, another complex. And, and that might be the complex's gateway to get to the park. So, it may end up being a more thoroughfare becau- because of what's behind, uh, you know, five years down the road or after it's built.
Yeah, I guess, I guess where, you know, that's where I was going with it, is that, like, it, thoroughfare in the sense that it's a place where people pass through.
Right.
And I understand the concerns about, you know, wanting to make it feel more private, but like, people might walk from the grocery store around to their car that they parked in a lot behind.
Right.
And, and, you know, historically, I think for the most part, when there's a gap in between buildings, it's because there's a roadway. And so, you know, making it reference that rather than the sort of more modern idea of a parking, or of a pedestrian plaza. The other comment that just popped into my head was, there's this large retail space in Building B. Sounds like there's maybe some potential ideas for it. That's great. One of the beautiful things about the older buildings on Lisbon Street is they have storefronts that can be divided up or expanded, you know, they can sort of yo-yo over time. Is that space, and I know the gray change makes it really tough, is that space being sort of thought of in ways of like, well, oh, you could have, you know, maybe you could take a third of the Building B space and have an entrance on Bates Street? Or, you know, maybe over time, it would be easier to divide that space up? Are those being sort of thought of, you know, not, not that like, that's gonna happen in the next ten years or the next twenty years? But it's part of what makes a building long-lasting and usable, is that it, it can move around and it, without it being onerous for the person.
I think as a building owner, they need to make sure they can maintain use of tenants over years and have that flexibility. And so, I think what is very, will be very easy is to create a door that goes left and a door that goes right, and split that in half, or even into thirds and thirds and thirds. And that gray zone will allow multiple entrances that feed different spaces. And the flexibility of having one slab allows them to manage different-sized tenants.
Right.
But your question gets to one of the items that we would be looking for a waiver on with Building B, which is the number of commercial entrances within that full building facade.
And the design overlay writes it as entrances per seventy-five feet of frontage. And so, we have four hundred and fifty feet of frontage that would say you needed five entrances total. We have this kind of like four and one.
Right.
So, we might barely, and if.
So, we have five, but they're not even located across the building.
And we wouldn't want the building owner, say halfway through design, they get one tenant who wants to combine those two spaces, and we only have one entrance, to suddenly fall out of compliance.
Right, right.
By accident, with the design overlay. So, it's, we might ask for a waiver on a four entrances or something like that, for, for the four and V frontage, just to not get accidentally caught.
I feel like the former Fisk Building is a good, there's a, there's a, there's a spot in the Fisk Building that has kind of a central lobby area that goes into multiple spots, but then, there's like a real long stretch.
Yeah.
That doesn't, there's some precedent, and again, it's right around the corner.
Phone office.
And it just isn't that far. I mean, like, you know, this stretch of Pine Street from the center of the park over is a very short walk.
Right.
You know, we, we're used to, maybe Lisbon Street is that nineteenth-century micro, but this isn't that far off.
Josh?
Ju- just one point that I just kind of wanna bring up, and I'm sure you're thinking about it, but. The Hartley Blocks retail space, there was no consideration put in for like access to that space from the back or sides. And when you're thinking about, like, for instance, if there's gonna be a food store, right? If you, if you don't have ways to access, like, and get skids of things into, into a building, if it's gonna be dropped off on the street, like, we're just, we're not Dresden. I mean, I wish we were, but we're not. So, it's just something to think about as far as like, how you build out those spaces to be flexible, to be used as retail as well. Because it's, it's an important aspect for, for potential.
Very good point. Those two X's on the back of Building B are a load-in zone. But I think we did have a, there is a question embedded in our memo, which says like, major non-residential projects to have a site design that accommodates a semi-truck trailer. And I think there's a little bit of, we'd love some clarity on, is this a major non-residential project? Or, um, you know, there's a major in mind, there's a major minor trigger that triggers some kind of loading.
And the, the design of the parking area behind Building B is such that we would have a service access drive to facilitate larger trucks. I don't know if it fits.
Sort of box trucks, not full articulated semi-trailers. Like, you can see they would.
Eighteen-wheeler.
There's a line that says service. We expect them to pull in, go forward, and back a box truck in and get the kind of mid-range food service, but not full semi.
This may actually be a question for staff, too. So, like, on the portion of Park Street that connects to, I think it's what, Chestnut? That, just that, that short little section right there, there, there used to be at least, uh, semi-trucks that would drop off a bunch of, of stuff right there. And I'm just wondering like, how that was, did that create problems as far as like, uh?
Where on Park Street?
Are you talking for like Samos?
Directed across from Samos, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if that was done, it was done with a remit to the traffic schedule to specifically allow a, pick up a drop-off zone for loading.
Okay.
And that's been controversial, depending on where you are, because some, then there's, some businesses want a loading zone specifically, but then other tenants and businesses on the street are upset because that's a dedicated area that's not supposed to be used in. So, that's recently come up and how to, how to change that. How do you make that work more often?
Yes, Shannon?
Eighteen-wheelers make it work on Lisbon Street all the time, front and back, and you have plenty of road frontage, both on Pine and Bates, for those two properties as well as Park. And so, if somebody needed to deliver something that they, I don't, I don't think we should be designing our downtown commercial or residential spaces about the ability to back up an eighteen-wheeler to it. That's not the standard we're aiming for.
Yeah, and it's sort of that remarkable thing that people bring their semis early in the morning. They love, drop the lift gate. They hand-truck things in and out, and they go, and it, and it works.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, it is, and I think we've got good streets, and the city has provided good service, and that early morning load-in will happen.
Sure. Okay, thank you so much. This is very interesting. We're looking forward to more.
Provide the glazing details.
Yes. Details and, and all of that, absolutely, absolutely.
I just wanted to check in with the applicant. Do you have further questions on your waivers that you needed? The setback of the entrances we haven't talked about?
I think the waivers were.
There was one minor, that gray hatched area, the design overlay calls for no more than a five-foot setback, but it also calls for recessed entries between fifteen and a hundred square feet. Our gray hatched areas are more than a hundred square feet. They're a recessed entry, and they're more than five feet, so they are.
They're public space?
No.
Right. Maybe no.
Well, we, we can work some language out at some point.
I mean, yeah, they are.
When you're, when you're.
Most of the building is within that zero to five.
Right, right. I think that's, that's, I think that's a workable waiver. I, I don't see, foresee any issues.
We might just ask for one, so it's an easy compliance, because we think it's good design, and we think the vast majority of the building is within five feet. We think we're meeting the overlay, but if it, we need to ask for a waiver, we'll just do it, so make sure the language is clean.
And then, and then one last thing you'll likely see from us, and I don't know if this gets handled at the planning board level, or if this is staff level, but is, um, probably foundations will likely cross the property line below grade. And then, the canopies over at some of the entrances, we would likely request.
Right, that again is, is going to be part of, well, we were talking about Wedgwood and, um, the, the stairs and the, the, you know, the, the canopies are, are part of the building, and so, they've got to be set back, so that's part of, when we look at the glazing, we'll be looking at that as well.
Okay.
So, that may not be an issue when you guys are ready to come before us.
And then, Wedgwood is more complicated, because it's on your own property. Here, we'd be talking to the city and giving the license.
Right, right. Well, this is, this is the problem. Right, yeah, there were restrictions because of old, old deeds and stuff, so, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and so, as far as our timeline, I mean, we're working on design now. We wanna be moving forward to get to a permit set within the next couple of months, I think.
Yeah, to come back to planning board.
So, that we'd be coming back hopefully with a devolvement review package.
Fantastic. We will, we're looking forward to seeing you guys.
Ready to go, before you go.
Ever saying wait. And hope, hopefully, it won't be such a long meeting and.
Well, thank you for making time for us.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
We got a, we got stuff from staff.
Um, so, when you talk about a canopy overhang, what are you talking about, Catherine? Cuz some things are not. Because some things are not potentially waiverable by the board. And so like some of the issues we had...
Is that something staff and the applicant could follow up on in more detail outside of a meeting?
Thorough discussion about it, right?
Okay, great.
Yeah, we should definitely talk about that, though, because I don't think those are waiverable.
To say it's something we can't deal with is definitely a conversation you should take offline, though.
Yes, yes, please.
Essentially, the city would have to give permission.
Come on, guys. It's 10 o'clock, I mean, and we have two more items.
Yeah, can we, can I jump in?
Yes.
Do you have to name these?
Feel free.
Can you do, can, do you want to say your part for E?
What? Well, we already waived.
I know, but it really is just asking staff to go do the thing. We're not doing anything about it tonight. Can we just give them that ability so that they don't have to wait two weeks for us to ask?
Yeah, please say it because I don't know what you're trying to say.
Yes, I'm removing it from the table. Is there another motion I need to make about that?
Yeah, you, you have to untable it.
I'd like to make a motion to untable item E from tonight.
Second.
Great.
All those in favor? I don't either at this point.
This is going to, you guys, this is going to be great. It's going to let, it's going to let staff do their job.
Okay.
Yeah, no, you were. Mark Hott was correct.
It's 10 o'clock, I'm usually in bed at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to initiate text amendments to Appendix A of the Zoning and Land Use Code and instruct staff...
Okay, hold on a second.
I need D.
You need D.
I need D.
We're, we, we got this, we got this. I'm going to finish this motion.
Okay.
We'll get there. I'm going to start at the beginning. I'd like to make a motion to initiate text amendments on Appendix A of the Zoning and Land Use Code and instruct the staff to come back to the planning board at a later date for a recommendation to the city council pursuant to Article 7, Planning Board, Section 4, and Article 17, Amendments and Legal Provisions, Section 5, B1C.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Nagine?
Yes.
Michael Markot?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kidridge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson?
Yes.
All right. Okay. So D. D is Planning Board Recommendation to the City Council on the Acquisition, excuse me, of Land on the Kennedy Park side of Pine Street and the Extension of Beach Street from Franklin Properties. Somebody please...
Heather, do you want to introduce this or would you like staff?
Yes, please, Heather, just tell us what you want and we'll do it.
Essentially, the park that you were just seeing, that they were talking about, I need to buy that land from Franklin Property. We have a contractor waiting for that.
That makes sense.
And then the second piece is Beach Street. There's a section at the end to make the full length of Beach Street available Franklin Property. That's part of the Riverfront Island Master Plan and also part of the mill redevelopment. Both of those parcels, we've been negotiating for almost a year now with Franklin Properties. We finally reached an agreement not to exceed $200,000 in total. What we're working out is how much each parcel is going to be versus the other one being a donation. City Council's already approved this, subject to planning board approval.
Okay, so there are two motions, one's for Park and one's for Beach?
No, it's all, well, I don't know what you guys did.
Can we make one motion?
As one agenda item.
Yes, we, we did it separately in case you needed it separate.
We're feeling good about it.
Yes, let's go.
I'd like to make a motion pursuant to Article 7, Section 4H of the Zoning and Land Use Code to send a favorable recommendation to the city council, who's already done that, for the acquisition of land on the Kennedy Park side of Pine Street, including, as well as the extension of Beach Street.
So I have a second?
Second.
All right, we've got all kinds of seconds. Any further discussions? Michael, Michael, Josh?
This side of the dais.
Roger?
Of the dais.
Just put anybody.
In chorus.
Okay, I'll, okay, so Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Nagine?
Don't do that. Yes.
Michael Markot?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kidridge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Can 143 get tabled and do we need to make a motion?
Do we need to do that?
This should be quick.
Yeah, we can do it.
All right.
Let's do it, I mean, we're here, might as well get rid of it. Okay. Shelley, tell us what's going on.
Okay, so this is a corner lot on the corner of Pine Street and Howe Street. It's across from the Credit Union.